All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council Chambers in City Hall, Tuesday, July the 26th, 2022. It is right now 6:07 PM, and we're doing our City Council Regular Meeting. Amongst us, before we start, two quick announcements. First of all, on Zoom, for those that are on Zoom, specifically the WDHT camera, which gets the audience, is just not operating properly. Hopefully, we can get that going, but at least you'll still be able to hear. Got it, councilman? And the second thing before we begin, I'd like to introduce.
No, he isn't. You know what?
Okay. And second thing I'd like to do, I'd like to introduce our junior mayor for the day. If you remember, we started that program a while back. So we picked somebody from the audience. Mr. Bahad Saad is our junior mayor for today. So he'll be sitting in City Council.
Councilman?
We're gonna blame him for everything that goes wrong.
That's right. Any of the votes that go right will be your fault.
Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting at this point. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad. Well, I think we have a junior mayor in that spot.
Yes.
Okay. So Hassan Ahmad is absent. Moby Dune.
Here.
Nancy Brier. Looks like she's absent.
She'll be late.
She's gonna be late.
She's currently absent. Bob Coniston.
It's unmute.
Bob. Bob's here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wensel.
Here.
Volume's off.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this point, we go ahead and go with the Pledge of Allegiance. And the Pledge of Allegiance is gonna be led by our junior mayor, Mr. Bahad Saad.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Saad. Next up is our agenda approval. Council Chair. Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve. The, I'm so sorry. We did the Pledge of Allegiance. The Dearborn Heights City Council approved the amended agenda for the regular meeting of July 26th, 2022 as submitted. Support.
Okay, council. Um, we're gonna go ahead and make a change on the amendment. Uh, the last time we voted during our last meeting, there was not enough council members to vote, uh, on a budget amendment to hire a full-time corporation council. And our corporation council, our current corporation council, or one of them at least, uh, basically let us know that we need four council members in order to go ahead and submit this. So we're gonna take it to a vote again. Because of that, I'm gonna move that one up to A. A. Yeah, we'll move it up to A, and then go ahead and continue from there. So you wanna go ahead and amend your motion? Or you wanna amend it as I just mentioned?
Uh, amend it as mentioned, Council Chair.
Okay.
Council Chair. Of course. Uh, we can make this eight A'd and have eight A-1 because they're both related if it goes supporting.
I, I think honestly, they're separate. So why don't we make one eight A, then we'll make eight B, and then just continue on adding one more letter on all of them.
Then we'll have to do that.
Do you agree, Madam Clerk? Instead of making it eight A and eight A and A-1, there's completely separate, um, decisions that have to be made. One of them is in order to pick a corp, uh, to amend the budget, to have a new corporation council, and the other one is to, uh, appoint a specific one by the mayor. So I think we should keep those separately.
That's fine. We could just then go A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H.
Exactly. Okay.
R, E, yeah.
Sounds good. Okay, so motion made by Councilman Baydun, supported by Councilman.
Coniston.
Coniston. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair, can you give us a little more detail on this now?
So, okay, I'll give you the specifics. So we had our clerk ask our corporation council in regards to the vote that was taken in regards to amending the budget at the last council meeting, not last Tuesday, the Tuesday before that.
Right.
In which we amended the budget and added, um, on the budget, the right to hire a new corporation attorney, uh, hospital insurance, life insurance, fringe benefits, et cetera, et cetera. At that time, the yeas on that was myself, Council Chair pro Tem Muscat, and Councilwoman Brier. The nays on that was Councilman Wensel. And according to our attorney, we need four yes votes for it to pass. So in order for it to pass, or not pass, we're taking it to a revote today.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's according to Section 7.1 of the city charter.
Correct.
Correct.
All right. So next up is Approval of the Minutes, Section 4A.
Council Chair.
We had to vote on that.
Wait, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Let's go ahead and take amending the budget.
We need to take a vote, and then we have the presentation.
Correct. So let's go ahead and take a vote about amending the budget. All in favor? I'm sorry, amending the agenda. All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next up, we have a Youth Leadership Citizens Award with Romulus Mayor McCray, uh, presented by Mayor Bazey. Mayor Bazey, come on up. You'd like, you could announce it first.
Okay, first, I wanna welcome Mayor McCray from Romulus. Welcome to the city of Dearborn Heights. And I also wanna welcome Foundation 14, uh, from, uh, you guys doing great work, you know, for our veterans and first responders. Thank you so much for being here today. Uh, also, we're gonna honor, we have Leadership Award for Ms. Fawaz, uh, for Leadership Award. I'll read the, uh, the proclamation. And also Chief Brogan, he's gonna award the two Citizens Award for they saved two youths' lives from drowning. So he'll, he'll talk about that. The first one, Mayor, did you, do you wanna present the first one to Isla?
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, I really wanna recognize her and her efforts, but also recognize the city of Dearborn Heights, uh, and for your participation in this year's event. Uh, the Wounded America event is a charity ride, motorcycle ride that goes through multiple communities, um, and for years has been generating, uh, funds to help run our local veterans nonprofits. Um, this year, Dearborn Heights stepped up. Lynn Killian from your Dearborn Heights is a, is a great supporter as well. Um, and it made another huge successful event this year. This year, the event was able to raise over $35,000 for, uh, two local veterans' causes, uh, Downriver for Veterans and also Foundation 14. So I wanted to acknowledge the city and appreciate your efforts, and I also wanted to talk to you a little bit about Foundation 14. And for a reason that I'll reveal when I'm talking, why I would like to have our CEO and President also, uh, recognize your resident. So Foundation 14, as it says on some of the patches on the back, "We are committed to keeping our combat veterans riding." We're an alternative lifestyle to some of our veterans who might come home broken, cracked, chipped, or have some issues here. Um, and instead of looking for their answers in a, in a pill bottle or in a whiskey bottle, we're trying to connect them. So we offer them a motorcycle, um, customize it, or a certain disability, get them out there, ride, and get them part of this culture again, and get them part of something bigger than themselves. And that's where we see the therapy or the reconnection is. A lot of times, these guys are coming home, and they miss that sense of being part of something bigger than themselves. You know, you went to Texas, you went to Michigan, you went to Indiana, they don't see that connection anymore. So we're trying to bring them together, and we've seen this in six years, 21 bikes. We've been able to work with no major companies. What I like in that too is to do the Susan Johnson Walker, an event like that, um, and actually watching somebody get cured of cancer while you're doing it. So I'm able to ride with these guys, share what I have a passion for, and, and I know what it means to me, and I can share that with them and watch them get out and ride. And we're seeing it, you know, it's helped these guys get back, be part of something again, and also it helps mend their families, make sure we include the families too. So that being said, that's a lot about Foundation 14. I don't wanna take a ton of your time, but I wanna introduce our president, CEO, Maria Crusoe. She is one of the most passionate, driven individuals you'll ever meet in your lifetime. Um, this is her brainchild. She got us here, and she came up with this event because of her compassion to give back to our warfighters, and she knew there was a gap and there was an issue here. And to be in her leadership role, you know, you can see it's really a male-dominated world, and a lot of alpha males are out there, and to, to hold her in that level of respect tells you a little, a respect, tells you a little bit about her integrity, her drive, her passion. And so I thought it was important to bring Maria up here and let her address one of your outstanding female residents as well.
Thank you, Bob. Um, you know, our, uh, just, and again, and to thank Dearborn Heights City Council for allowing us to have time on your agenda and to be here today. Um, we're grateful for that and for this opportunity. Um, thank you, Bob. We've worked together for, for several years now, and, um, just a little history on the, the connection and how and why we work together. It was, um, my late fiancé and I started Foundation 14 together about six years ago, and we were looking for people to round out our leadership team, people who had skills, who had the ability to make decisions, who had the ability to see the vision, had passion and dedication to our veterans. But Bob has that extra kind of X-factor where he can connect with people, and he can, at the same time, stay very grounded, um, and just very real. And we, we saw that as being an asset to our team, and we started to work together. And Bob has moved on to, to a bigger role within the community, and it's no surprise. He, he's passionate about what he does, but it all is driven from wanting to do good. And the only footprint he wants to leave, from, from what I've seen of him, is to leave it a better place, um, for his community and for the next generation. So speaks a lot to his character and the fact that you've continued on to support us and support the mission, um, means a lot. And we, we've become friends, and as we say in the foundation, we've become family. So, um, Wounded America is, uh, an event that we were asked to be a guest speaker at many years ago. We, we came, uh, to know the organization, and they got to know us, and so we were very fortunate to be selected as a beneficiary and of the, of the proceeds. We, um, continued to be selected for several years, and we don't ever expect it, but when we do, we're very grateful, because as Bob shared, we have assisted 21 veterans, soon to be more, um, with either modifying their bike due to a combat-related disability, or repaired their motorcycle for them to be able to ride safely, but mostly bike presentations. And I, and I just, I wanna, um, stress that these are not gifts, these are not awards for their service. The veterans that we seek to find, and we often have to put, that's the hardest part of what we do is finding them, because these are the ones that don't necessarily want to be found. These are the ones that are not putting their hands up for handouts, these are not the ones that are asking for help. These are individuals, men and women, who are very proud about their service, they're very proud to be American, and they're also, they wanna stand on their own two feet. Um, but they, they've started to disassociate because of what they've brought back from war. So the motorcycle is a tool. It allows them access, access to community, which obviously all of you know and understand very well how important that is. For veterans, brotherhood and camaraderie is really the magic. And when we are able to connect with a veteran on that level, they just wanna be part of something that's bigger than themselves, but they've gotten lost along the way, they've gotten broken. Um, and when they start riding, that's when we hear the feedback from their families and their friends, "Thank you for giving me back my son. Haven't seen my daughter smile." So she came back.
That's awesome.
So what you have all been part of and what you have all supported in, in selecting us and in putting this ride together for other veteran organizations makes all of that happen. So thank you. Um, we, again, don't ever expect the support or don't ever expect to, to be selected, but when we are, we're very grateful for it. It allows us to do what we do. And so this year, when we heard that a young lady put together a lemonade stand, honestly, as, as a woman that works, you know, in a male-dominated world, um, I thought, "That's brilliant." And then I, I wanted to see what happened, and she raised over $500 on her own from a lemonade stand. So Foundation 14 really wanted to acknowledge her because not only did she answer that call to action and follow her passion to do something that was meaningful to her community, um, but she became a leader among her peers and a leader in our community. So, um, Isla, Othman, if you wouldn't mind joining Bob and I, we would like to present you. So this is for you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I won't take up any more of your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service, Othman.
Thank you.
Wait, you know what? Let's, let's keep her up there for just, yeah, let her say something. You wanna say something?
Of course.
Uh, thank you veterinarians for saving our word, and, and, and thank you for coming here, the mayor, for giving me this award.
Wow!
My mom and dad.
Oh, my God. Hey, you want my job? Council Chair? Yeah, it's Councilman.
I just got a quick question, and thank you guys so much for being here. Thank you to the mayor. Thank you to the mayor. This is, uh, it really is an amazing presentation. I actually have two questions. My first question is, um, and I, I swear I'm not doing it to be funny, but I've watched Sons of Anarchy, so I walked in here and I said, "Who's fighting?" Um, but, you know, so do you guys have the round table and everything, or? Okay. Like it.
We do have a table we get around, but it's not round.
All right.
Yeah, we, we definitely make sure, you know, what you see on TV, Sons of Anarchy, that is not.
I know, I know. My second question, my second question is, how do we get, uh, you know, can we purchase, uh, you know, the entire, anything that can go back towards this?
Absolutely.
So then maybe it goes back to, uh, you know, our veterans.
Foundation14.org is our website. You go down there to buy it, and that's how we run some of our, we sell t-shirts, hats, all kinds of different, uh.
And all proceeds go back towards?
All that goes right into fueling, you know, there is no payroll with Foundation 14. All the money that we make goes right into, uh, keeping our combat vets riding.
Yeah. And I can tell you, I was at the event, and I gotta tell you, it was pretty cool. The little kid that came out, um, to watch, I don't know, 200, whatever it was, motorcycle just back to back to back to back. It was, the roar of the bikes was just so cool, it wasn't even funny. So God bless you guys, and thank you for your service to the country. Appreciate it. All right. Uh, next up on agenda, there's another two more.
So again, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you being here today, and thanks to Foundation 14. You guys are amazing, do a lot of work. It's a few years I've been involved, you know, with, uh, and I also wanna thank Lynn. Uh, Lynn, please stand up. I know we don't recognize her that much, but Lynn, thank you so much for everything that you do. I actually appreciate you. She's very, uh, friendly with the veterans. I mean, my God, you know, everything that she does for our veterans, it's just, it's very heartwarming. Thank you, Lynn, for everything you and I do. Appreciate you. Also, what, what we're doing, um, so every year, we're gonna be doing a, a proclamation and also an award, uh, for a Junior Youth Leadership Achievement Award. So this, this year, we chose Ms. Marion Fawaz. So I'm gonna read the, the proclamation, and this is some of the stuff, the reason why, uh, she was chosen for this award. Whereas Marion Fawaz is being awarded the 2022-2023 Dearborn Heights Youth Leadership Achievement Award. And this award recognizes a junior, senior, has demonstrated exceptional leadership in academics through self-awareness, collaboration, service commitment to cause community impact, and she created a Model United Nations Club in 2021, and she recruited other team members and took the club across two cities, both Dearborn and Dearborn Heights. She, she also invited the largest Model UN Nations, uh, conference, uh, in Midwest, it was in Lansing, and she also led the fundraising effort to raise 400, I'm, I'm sorry, $4,000 for that conference. She also, she was featured in the Inspiring Teen Magazine in March 2022, and for her accomplishments, and also for the impressive and admirable list of accomplishments, such as, some of the, some of them include 400 community service hours, volunteering for eternal lights, volunteering on various campaigns, Student Congress, Key Clubs, Competitive Debate, Girl Scouts of Southeast Michigan, tutoring elementary students, mentoring high school and middle school students, Muslim Student Association, and she also displayed that exemplary performance in exceptional leadership, serving commitment and community impact, strong collaboration among our youth leadership, her extremely successful and impressive academic career. I wanna congratulate Marion Fawaz. You could come up. So we wanna present you with our word. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Ma'am, did you wanna say a word if you'd like? You're welcome to.
I just wanted to say thank you to the city council and to Mayor Bo Bazey.
You're welcome.
Now, uh, Chief Brogan, he's gonna present the Two Citizens Award.
Okay.
Chief Brogan.
Chief, come on up.
All right, thank you. Um, actually, if I get Donna and Ali to come and join me here. Actually, there's a little background for it. Come on up. So just as a little background, um, the call that I'm about to describe here, when the guys got back from the call, they, they texted me and called me immediately to let me know what you guys had done. And, and the guys that are here today heard about it also, and so they wanted to be here to sit, to see you guys getting this award. Um, after I described to the mayor what happened, he, he agreed that a citizen award is definitely in order, and, and after I read what happened, I'm sure, I'm sure everyone will agree. So, um, I'm just gonna go ahead and read the letter. Uh, on June 28th, 2022, Dearborn Heights Fire Department responded to a call for two children, aged 16 and 14, who were pulled from the bottom of a swimming pool. DHFD recognizes Donna Salhami and Ali Bahad Saad for their actions taken on that day. The children were attending a gathering at the home, and the father had just left for the store. They were not expected to be in the pool and did not even have swimsuits on. However, one of the kids entered the pool just intending on wading in the shallow end. She walked up to the drop-off and then slid into the deep end, where she began to struggle as she didn't know how to swim. As she struggled, her brother jumped in the pool to try to save her, but both kids went under the water. Within minutes, Donna noticed the kids at the bottom of the pool, and she dove in without hesitation and swam to the bottom of the 12-foot-deep pool in attempt to save them. She was able to pull a 16-year-old up first, and once she got to the surface, her brother, Ali, pulled her out of the water and then dove in to rescue the second child. Donna, who was RN, assessed both the kids and found them not breathing and pulseless. She began CPR on the 16-year-old and coached her brother on how to give CPR to the 14-year-old. After about two minutes of CPR, the 14-year-old began to cough and regain consciousness, and the 16-year-old remained unresponsive, and Donna persisted with CPR. A Dearborn Heights Fire Department crews arrived and took over care of the children three minutes after the initial 911 call. While carrying the 16-year-old to the squad, she began to cough and awaken. While still struggling, both kids had heartbeats and were breathing on their own. Dearborn Heights Fire Crews continued to support them while transporting them to the hospital. Since then, the children have made full recovery, and without the quick and skilled actions taken by Donna and Ali, the children would have had neurological deficits if they survived at all. On behalf of the Dearborn Heights Fire Department, we present you with the Citizens Award and our heartfelt thank you for a job well done.
God bless you guys.
Good job.
Good job. God bless.
Good job, guys.
Charlie Saad, good job, man.
Just a quick update on the, on the two kids. They're both, uh, 100%. They actually live down the street from one of our restaurants, and they ride their bike up there and say hi to me all the time. So it's in God's hands that they, they came out of this totally unscathed.
Nice. So a little side note, Ali also happens to be the father of our junior mayor today, so. Okay. Next up on agenda is Approval of Minutes. Item four. You got one more?
I mean, if somebody wants to leave, you know, for the awards, you know, they can right now, because I know it's gonna be a long-winded meeting, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I don't wanna put you through that. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Leaving in the middle.
All right. So now that our junior mayor has resigned.
I guess that's the remainder.
Yeah. We're left with Bill Bazey.
We got, we got left with the same old mayor?
Same mayor. All right. So back to item number four, Approval of the Minutes. Council Chair. Uh, Councilman Baydun, but before you start, I wanna make sure with the clerk, we probably have to, do we have to do any amendment on that because of the previous vote in regards to the budget? Or we're fine? Yeah.
This is gonna be the minutes for the special one, but on the motion?
This is a special meeting, but I'm talking about the next one.
No, we included that in the minutes because it actually was defeated and cited the charter section in there.
Okay. No problem. Go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the special meeting of July 12th, 2022, as outlined in 4A. Support.
Motion made by Councilman Baydun on 4A, supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Council Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Just make it aware that, uh, aware that Councilwoman Nancy Brier has attended the meeting.
Yes, thank you. Clerk, you got that? Okay, great. Next is item 4B. Council Chair. Councilman Muscat.
I, uh, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 12th, 2022, as outlined in 4B.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on agenda is Public Hearings and Comment on Agenda Items. You will have two minutes. If anybody would like to speak, please come on up. And we will go to Zoom next. So if you could do me a favor, in addition, of course, name, street, and city, let me know if you're speaking as an HR director or as an individual.
Okay. So I'm Margaret Hazlett. I'm speaking on behalf of the, as an HR director for the city of Dearborn Heights.
Okay.
And my comments are, uh, with respect to, uh, number eight, letter A, or it might be letter B in terms of the corporate council appointment. It's my pleasure to introduce to you our recommended candidate for our corporate council, Ms. Nadia Hamadi. Ms. Hamadi's been practicing law for about 10 years with experience both in the private practice and, um, uh, and has worked as a governmental regulatory attorney. She served the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation as a deputy chief attorney, and she served the Florida Department of Financial Services Office of General Counsel as a senior attorney. And she's most recently served as an Assistant Attorney General for the Michigan Department of Attorney General, practicing in the areas of environmental law, administrative law, and agricultural law. She holds a Bachelor's of Arts degree in early childhood education and a Master's degree in education, both from the University of South Alabama. And then her career took a left turn, and she earned her Juris Doctorate degree in law from Wayne State University Law School. She's licensed to practice law both in Michigan and Florida. Her strengths include regulatory and municipal code compliance, legal research and writing, policy and procedure development, complex litigation, risk assessment and mitigation, and leadership and team building. With her skills and experience, we're excited to recommend her for our Corporation Council position and feel that she can contribute to the challenges and changes that we wish to make as a city. Thank you.
Is she here by any chance?
She's, she's on her way.
Okay, we're here. Okay. We, we'll go ahead and meet her. Um, but, Councilman, go ahead.
Yeah, does she live in Dearborn Heights?
Not at the moment, but she will be moving here.
Thank you.
Do you, I mean, I don't know if we should ask you or ask her at the time, but one of the concerns that I had is how much municipal experience she had.
So she's been working for, um, the, both governmental agencies in Florida and then for the, um, uh, what did I just say? From Michigan?
Attorney General's office.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, but no, did not work for, um, any type of city?
She hasn't served as a corporation council for another city. No, she has not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. One up.
Rachel LePoy, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. A few comments on a few different things. Regarding the tree ordinance, similar to the feeding animals ordinance, it says it's an emergency approval one, not a first reading, second reading thing, so I was wondering why that's considered an emergency. You can address that when it comes up on the agenda, obviously. I don't know. Usually you guys don't respond now, do you?
We can if we'd like.
I don't need a response. You can figure that out later. But I will say, if we can try not to make these emergency ordinances because it doesn't give people a chance, like who watch the council meetings on TV, a chance to comment on it before it's actually approved as an ordinance. Regarding the Warren Valley Golf Course contract, and I'm just going to preface this by saying that if it was my own father doing this, which he does have the qualifications, I'd be saying the same things. So this isn't about any individual anything. First, was this version of the contract reviewed and approved by our Corporation Council? And that one I would like an answer to.
My understanding is that this is the exact same document that I submitted, except when it was printed, there were some formatting changes that ended up taking place.
So you did review and approve this version of the contract?
This is the version, this is a version of something that I sent to the mayor's office, and it looks to me to be the same thing, except for some formatting changes.
Okay, so you did, so.
I did not re-review the document.
But the one that you blasted, you did approve it as Corporation Council. That's part of the charter, I believe.
Yeah, I reviewed the last version that I sent, and the mayor said it was printed out. And it looks like it's the same thing. It looks like there is like different widow anchor spacing type of stuff, is what it looks like. So that might just be a default in the printer for, for the mayor's assistant.
Okay. A question for everybody that you can all, you don't need to answer, but does everyone feel that the contract is in the city's best interest? Or if it's just the best we're going to get? Because if it's just the best we're going to get, I don't think that that's what we should go with. We should always go for the best, best, right? And if that means we need to adjust things, we adjust. Regarding the revived golf management being part of this, shouldn't that be a subcontract handled by the lesee or leaser? Since that wasn't part of the original RFP, end quote. With the RFP and the quote in this contract, there's some major omissions. And the RFP specifically included things, I gave you guys a list of them. And I'm concerned that there's a lot of things that the city would be responsible for. When I did the math, it seems as though we would have to invest over $5 million. And that's a considerable amount. I really hope you guys discuss this thoroughly and really, really look at this because I think that there could be a way, I looked at the numbers for Dearborn Hills Golf Course from 2014 to 2020. It almost always broke even. Some years it was a little over, some years it was a little under. The way it is right now with this contract, I can't see anybody doing anything but losing money. And that's not good for anybody. We shouldn't want that for a resident who's coming in and trying to help the city. And unless, unless he's lucky enough to have a billion dollars in his bank account and can spend it billy-nilly, it doesn't make sense to me. So, did you, you need to say something?
I'm going to, she mentioned, okay, so if somebody needs more than two minutes, they have to ask for it. She mentioned that she contacted me, but pretty close to the council. No, I know. So I'm going to give you 30 seconds just out of respect. Go ahead.
So I, my suggestion would be to consider adjusting things because this does not match the RFP that you guys put out at all, when it comes down to it. Like, there's elements, but the overall picture is so different that I would suggest, for example, if we did a millage similar to our sanitation one, it's about $10 a year on a $100,000 house, $100 a year on a $1 million house. That would cover the costs to run the golf course, based on Dearborn Hills numbers. And I'm happy to discuss those with you if you need to.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else would like to speak? Please state your name, city, street.
Ali Peter. I'm representing the Your Honor Loan Foundation for item 11C.
Okay.
I brought some documentation for you guys. So these are rough drafts that haven't been finalized or approved by my board yet, but they just represent the community outreach programs we're going to use the funding for if approved for the charity poker license, if you'd like to see them.
Can I get close to the microphone? Is that all you had to say?
No, I actually have a copy of the books from 2020, as 2020 and 2021, 2022 is still being, no, I'm sorry. 19 and 20, 2021 is still being finalized by my account, and I'll have it ready in a couple of weeks.
Okay, this is for item 11?
C.
Oh, yes.
So if you want, I can show you guys the brochure.
That's a charitable gaming license. Okay, so whatever you've got to give to us, give it to the clerk, and then they'll make sure they keep a copy and they pass it to us.
Council Chair.
Yes, Council.
Do we issue these often?
Rarely, extremely rarely. So I spoke with Corporation Council, I actually, Madam Clerk spoke with Corporation Council. I spoke with the Madam Clerk. This is extremely rare that they come in front of us. The last one, I'm trying to remember who it was. It was a while back, maybe two, three years back. It's extremely rare. I spoke with the gentleman earlier today, and from what I understand, he'll explain a little bit further, maybe. He gets his gaming license in the city, but this, he'll be doing stuff statewide for charitable organizations. Do you want to give him a brief summary of what I spoke to you about this morning?
Yeah, so I own a, I'm the co-founder of a nonprofit here in Dearborn Heights. We focus on mental health awareness education, financial literacy education, nutritional health education, physical health education for underprivileged youth throughout metro Detroit and Wayne County area. What we're trying to do is we're trying to become the charity in which poker rooms like American Legion and things of that nature, they need a charity to donate the funds to, to be able to hold the charity room, the poker rooms. So we're trying to get the license so we can be the charity that would receive the funds that are raised when they hold those poker rooms and things of that nature. So basically, if my understanding is of what the Gaming Commission called me is correct, I need you guys to basically acknowledge that my foundation is addressed and based out of Dearborn Heights. And then I submit them all my books and all my, my entire life story, basically. And they interview me, and then they decide, the Gaming Commission decides if they want to approve the license or not.
Wait, Councilman, if you don't mind, what I'm going to do is I'm going to just allow him to speak, and then we'll go ahead and ask more questions when his item comes up at that point. I think it'll be better. Because I don't want to go into a full-blown conversation.
Whatever's easier for you guys.
But go ahead, quick question.
No, I'll say.
Okay. So we'll come back to you when we get to item 11A or C.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Come on up, sir. You know the routine.
Good evening. You know.
I have your address memorized, but you still need to repeat it.
Okay. Rosemary Street, Dearborn Heights.
And your name?
Zohair Abdulhaq.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask for extra time, please.
I can't give it right now. You know that, so I'll give you 30 seconds out of respect. Get the microphones as close as you can.
I'm going to speak about 8E, the golf course.
Close to the microphone.
I have a question for Mr. Mayatki. Mr. Mayatki, if you are a resident and you're going to vote on this contract, would you vote yes on it the way it is?
8E, you said?
Yeah, the golf course contract. If you are, you are a taxpayer in this city.
Yes, I am.
Would you vote yes on it as is? Do you think it is in the best interest of the city?
I think it's, I would want a few changes.
Thank you. I really don't want to be negative tonight. I want to thank the mayor for all the effort he did. And I want to thank Mr. Isa for being brave enough to come and bid on this. And I know he spent money and time on it, and I hate to see dragging him any further on this contract. We reduced our budget by $4 million from operation expenses, if you remember the 16%, because we didn't have money. We took the $2 million from the healthcare, which was earmarked for the retiree OPEB. And we borrowed $2.2 million from ARPA because we don't have money in the city. The revenue is a little low. Then we couldn't give our employees a decent increase in salary because we are afraid it's going to affect the future retirement benefit of those employee. We gave them instead $2,000 bonus, and we promised, I believe, 1% in the future. With all these things, from what I see in this contract, we have to spend between approximately between the high number and the low number, $1.2 million, which we do not have in the budget. And it is not budgeted for in the budget. I wonder where you guys are going to get $1.2 million to fix things in the golf course and give it to whoever it is. If my brother came with this contract, I would stand and say the same thing. This contract, it's not in any way, shape, or form resemble the RFP, which was put out. It's not in the best interest of the city. And I am going to suggest, if we make mistake, there is nothing wrong with us taking a step back and do things right. I would recommend that we take this back to the administration and let Mr. Alidib, the engineer of the city, put a decent RFP, since we know all the details now. And let's attach a contract to that RFP, what we want from anybody. If nobody comes in, then I don't mind if we go for bond, millage, whatever, because we have done our duty. Right now, we haven't done our duty, and I hope you take that to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. While you're coming up, I'd like to mention to those in the audience and on Zoom, when you need extra time, please call me at least a day ahead of time. I rarely deny it, but you got to get approval ahead of time to get more than two minutes. Out of respect, I've given all you guys an extra, you know, a few seconds, but just please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Okay. Trebekowski, Columbia Street, Vince. I think what Mr. Zohair Abdulhaq said is right on point. Can you hear me?
You got to come as close as you can. We're working on these microphones. Unfortunately, they're not good.
I believe what Mr. Zohair Abdulhaq said is right on point. Well, this is, this has been a fiasco ever since it started. If we don't have enough money, why are we jumping forward into something? I made suggestions to this council and this body and this administration about going out and running this under the recreational program where we can get grants and federal funding to help pay for this. Why any of that is falling on deaf ears is beyond me. We paid $1.8 million for this golf course, and now it's going to cost us an additional $1.2 million, and you don't have it? That's like sitting there staring at the ice cream man and not having a quarter to buy an ice cream bar. Doesn't make sense. So please consider, if this isn't right, don't do it. You wouldn't buy a used car that's a piece of crap now, would you? Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Anybody else in the audience? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to Zoom. Madam Clerk, anybody on Zoom that's looking to speak?
I don't see any hands up.
Okay, going once, twice. Nobody in person? All right. We'll go ahead and go to the next, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Go ahead and go to the next agenda item. Item six, fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Badun.
Move that to the Dearborn Heights City Council, approve the current claims 6-1 through 6-107, as submitted.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Badun, supported by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take it to a vote.
Council Chair.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, yes?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, it's been brought to my intention that claim number 43, the PC on it is incorrect, and that should be removed going forward.
643.
43.
What is wrong on it? I'm sorry?
The PC at the end. It just is not a P, it's not a.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I guess the other firms are, but it should just be Gary Miyaki, okay?
Okay. No problem. Thank you. I didn't even see that. My God. You want to point it out, Madam Clerk? I just want to make sure we're voting right.
You said the PC. Can you show me what you're referencing? Show me.
Oh, not on this. Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, not on, not on the backup. On the summary. Okay, thank you. I didn't see anything on the backup. Just want to make sure we're on the same page. Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, so go ahead. Motion made by Councilman Badun, seconded by Councilman Constant. Is there any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bids. CEDD Director Jamal bid award for the demolition contract for FEMA slash PDMC 2016 grant on 24045 Courier and 24095 Courier.
Council Chair.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council awarded a bid for the demolition contract for the FEMA, Michigan State Police, PDMC 2016 grant for two homes located at 24045 Courier and 24095 Courier to Vincon Inc. Incorporated in an amount of $55,204, as they are the lowest qualified bidder. Also authorize the city engineer Deeb to approve the necessary discovery change order in the amount not to exceed 20% of the bid equal amount, amount equal to $11,408. In addition, authorize the mayor, the city clerk, to sign a contract in behalf of the city. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants, the treasurer to issue payment in amount not to exceed $66,612, as outlined in 7A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Is there any discussion on that? I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, just to clarify for the residents, I thank the administration for putting this together because they're continuing to work, as I've talked about many times before. I'm happy that the administration is continuing to focus on the Ecorse Creek situation near Van Born. Unfortunately, a lot of residents have been impacted by that, and I commend the administration and Mayor Bazzi for continuing to focus on it. I'd also like to commend our director, Hassan Jamal. I know firsthand that he did a lot of work on this, I mean, a lot of work on this. And to put this thing together at, like, pull it through at the last second. So had the director not done what he did, we would not have this money. And basically, what that means is 90% of the funds are being paid by federal dollars, and only 10% is being paid by us. So he saved us a lot of money and pulled this thing through at the last second. I'd also like to commend the clerk's office for helping put this thing together at the last second. I know Dana specifically probably hated me trying to rush this thing through. And I knew it was a lot of work for her, and I had her, basically what they call, like, just put it on the agenda, but just hold it until we got the rest of the paperwork. So she did a lot of work last second, and so did Hassan Jamal. So thank you, everyone, for putting this thing together. I appreciate it. All right, so any other comments on that? Hearing none. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eight, I'm sorry, 4B, CED.
Eight, seven B.
We are, seven B, I'm sorry, seven B. CEDD Director Jamal bid award demolition oversight contract for FEMA slash PDMC 2016 grant, 24045 Courier and 24095 Courier.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constant.
Uh, Councilwoman Breyer would like to make this motion.
Go ahead, Councilman.
All right. I'd like to make the motion that the city, that Dearborn Heights City Council awarded a bid for the demolition oversight contract for the FEMA slash MSP PDMC 2016 grant for two homes located at 24045 Courier, 24095 Courier to environmental testing and consulting in the amount of $9,700, as they are the only submitted bid and qualified bidder. Also authorize city engineer, Mr. Deeb, to approve the necessary discovery change orders in amount not to exceed 20% of the bid amount equal to $1,940. In addition, authorize the mayor, city clerk, to. In addition, authorize the mayor, city clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment in amount not to exceed eleven thousand six hundred and forty dollars as outlined in seven B.
Support. Motion made by Councilwoman Brier, supported by Councilman Constan. Is there any other discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wensel, go ahead.
I have a question for Director Jamal.
Sure.
Is he here?
Yes, he's on Zoom.
Okay.
If you don't mind, Councilman, before you go, I just want to also commend Mr. Ali Deep, our city engineer, also did a lot of work on this thing, so I thank him for his work. Go ahead, Councilman. Mr. Jamal, can you unmute?
Uh, you hear me?
Yes.
Loud and clear.
Loud and clear.
Today, today I will build our, our communication here in the C E D D where I sit right now. Thanks to Mr. Cooper, the new IT director.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, thank you, Director. You know, it's a wonderful thing that we're getting these grants to purchase these homes and it's good for these homeowners. However, unfortunately, this isn't solving any of the problems causing the floods. Is this, can this money be used in a different way as far as flood retention basins somewhere else or is this money only available or can we apply for anything else, only available for demolition of homes?
Uh, Council, uh, Wensel, uh, quick answer, no. Those particular two grants, one of them be expanded and closed and we get fifty thousand dollars back reimbursed just a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the, the treasurer will testify for that. Uh, thanks for the assistance from everybody. So we closed the first one, which is two point eight million dollars. This second one, which is also started in two thousand sixteen, they were grants specifically to alleviate the misery of the flood on the people who voluntarily went away from the flood. It's not, it's not in no way or shape for resolving any flood issue, just alleviating the misery on the people who want to leave and go somewhere else. Uh, this is seventy-five percent FEMA and twenty-five percent the city. The new grant, which we expect few months from now, maybe five, six months, they are ninety percent and ten percent for the city. I tried, we tried with the mayor, we tried with the state police, with FEMA, to consider the new regulatory on this particular aged, you know, abandoned, uh, grant, we couldn't. They say, we glad we have the extension for one year, so we accepted the seventy-five, twenty-five percent, which you approved long time ago. So there is a new grant, we are working with Waitren for the mitigation of the flood. Those are, I talked to during the Ecorse Creek Commission, me, Director Deeb, the mayor, the assistant, I mean, the chief of staff, the board, we are working together to put the different grant, we call them, you know, the scoping grant, to, to work with the county also to see if we can do something to assist with the flood. But those particular grant are for... The, the homeowners, Councilman, in my office, they tried, they couldn't believe six homeowners, six families were alleviated by extending this particular grant for one more year. Never happened in the history of Michigan that FEMA extend their grant more than five years. They give us, with the help of the mayor and others, behind the scene, a little bit of me only, a little bit, I only, I only coordinated this. We were able to extend it six years and we were able to help six families. Thank you, guys, thank you all. I, I did, I did explain that to, to the chair in a very long conversation. He was so happy. Uh, remember, that's a misery for families, that's a family. We are touching the heart, we are touching the, the life of the people who are so thankful for you guys, for all of us, that they were able to leave, just want to leave. Six homes, six families, just imagine if it's in your own family. So thank you all.
Thank you, Director, appreciate it.
I'm trying to finish them so I can get as much money as I can from FEMA, but if I can't do it by, by year thirty, there is a fine three hundred dollars on the bid. That's why I consider it very strong, very, very precise, you know, this qualification. I don't want anybody to come later on and say I can't do it forever. I want to leave.
Okay.
I want to try to finish.
Okay.
If I can finish it with the FEMA money, I can finish it with the C D B G money, which I am trying.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jamal, appreciate it. Any other discussion items on this? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take it to, and congratulations, of course, to the residents that were able to get this help and get out of this unfortunate situation. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, we're going to go, now remember, we're changing the rotation. So the first one we're going to go with is the one that was from last week and this is a budget amendment. Two weeks ago, I'm sorry. And all of this, we could just reference it based on what was in there two weeks ago. It's the same one and it's making a budget change. Here it is. I'll, I'll repeat the motion from back then. The motion was, or I'm sorry, the proposal by the city, specifically the administration and the mayor's office, is to approve the budget amendments to hire a full-time corporation counsel and authorize the comptroller to create a new general ledger accounts as needed, as out, and then this is as outlined, and then in addition to the salary of the lawyer, which would be a hundred and fifteen thousand, you got hospital insurance of thirteen thousand five hundred, life insurance of fifteen hundred, fringe benefits of forty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five, for a total contract of one seventy-one nine twenty-five.
Council Chair.
Yes.
May I make the motion?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. I move that the city council approve the budget amendment to hire a full-time corporation counsel and authorize a comptroller to create a new GL account as needed, as outlined in eight A per Mayor Bill Bazey communication dated July fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Bedun. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Constan, go ahead.
Yeah, and I unfortunately was not here when we voted the last time, but I think changing the way we've been contracting for our legal services for the last fifty-plus years and contracting with the lowest bidder and having an independent corporation counsel that, and having worked in the law department of the city of Dearborn and knowing that it was highly political lawsuits, that I'd like to see us have a study session on this before we embark on this and finalize this.
Okay. And, and I will repeat how I felt about this two weeks ago, so I'll just repeat the same statement for those council members that were not here at the time. I think Gary Miyaki has done a remarkable job. I think he's done a great job with the city for the last twenty, thirty, whatever it is, years, I'm not going to age you here, but I'll just say many years at least, and very knowledgeable in terms of anything, anything city-related. He's got a database up here that can't be replicated via computer. At the same time, though, his commitments are spread into threefold. He's a city prosecutor, he's a city attorney, corporation counsel, and he has his own firm that he runs. With all three, unfortunately, we at the city, at least with the mayor, need somebody full-time. And I gave an example a couple of weeks ago, in Dearborn, you've got, off the top of my head from what I recall, I think they got eight or ten, maybe even eleven attorneys.
Seven or eight.
Okay, seven or eight attorneys. We have right now, not capability-wise, but we have availability-wise, one-third of an attorney. And that's one reason why the administration is vying to get a full-time attorney, because there's a lot of items that are sometimes, even my conversations with a corporation attorney sometimes are delayed only because, you know, I mean, he's only human, he's only, he's more than human, he does a lot of things, a lot more things than I can accomplish in a day, but still, the, the administration felt they needed a full-time attorney to be able to deal with a lot of the items that come up on a regular and daily basis. And sometimes it's difficult for him to do that with the other commitments that he's got.
Uh, thank you, Council Chair. I know for the years that we had Mark Roberts with Seacrest Wardle and their municipal law department, uh, Mark Roberts was always viable and we just went through and approved Paul Rancilio to provide the backup and, and, um, both with the prosecution and with the, you know, the, the depth that a contracting with a firm as a assistant corporation counsel gives us. Because the problem is for one person to wear this many hats and if you think about it, the, having the full-time corporation counsel in-house, not doing prosecutions, that, that we're sort of getting a third less for the money we're spending because that person is not, and rightfully so, doing the prosecution. So in other words, we're still paying Mr. Miyaki or whoever else for the prosecutions. So the economics of it, I, I, I just don't think it makes sense.
But on the other hand, the economics of it, and I do see your point, but on the other hand, you need a full-time attorney to run a city, period, with different things that come up on a regular and daily basis. And some of the residents see us come up here and vote, but they don't know a lot of the backend stuff that's involved between the administration, the mayor, the city council chair, the council persons, you know, et cetera, et cetera, the clerk's office, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, in my opinion, a full-time attorney, there's no doubt in my mind, is needed, in my personal mind.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Um, I voted no on this last meeting and I'm going to vote no again and also on eight A, but, um, we weren't, we were asked to approve a new position and we weren't getting any job description, what this person's going to be doing, just a corporation counsel or we've got a rough budget that they're going to be using for it. I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, the, council, uh, council, current corporation counsel Miyaki, he's, he knows this city like no one else. I mean, he knows the ins and outs of everything, everything he's involved with. And my idea would be to hire a, an assistant full-time in city hall to deal exactly what you were saying, someone in city hall that's full-time, an assistant to Gary, keep him as corporation counsel, because it's, it's a no-brainer, you get, you can't, you can't replace Gary Miyaki. That's, that's, that's all it goes, so that's my opinion.
Okay. Appreciate it, Councilman. I, I do want to say in regards to the salary of the new corporation attorney is a hundred and fifteen thousand. I know that sounds like a lot of money, it is a lot of money, but for an attorney, that is not honestly high-paid, that's just fair pay if that, so keep that in mind.
Well, there's benefits too.
Yeah, with benefits, but there's always going to be that, because they're going to become our salaried in-house attorney. And again, as an example, I mean, I can't think of any city that doesn't have a full-time attorney off the top of my head, but Dearborn is one I'm most familiar with and like I said, they've got eight.
I'm, I'm in favor of having somebody.
They're not, they're not eight times bigger than us, side note.
Yeah, they're four times, not even four, but I'm in favor of having someone here full-time.
Okay.
But a system would be great and I, I agree with Councilman Constan, we should, you know, definitely have a study session on this because this is a new position with little known about it and so...
Okay. Appreciate it, Councilman, thank you. Any other discussion?
One quick question.
Okay, it's very quick.
We're creating a new department, so we'll have a law department?
I mean, you know, department, there's, obviously, I mean, maybe the mayor, you want to chime in?
We, we've always had a, a law department and Mr. Miyaki was doing a law department, so it's not like you're creating, all you got to do is we need space, full-time space for somebody. So we've always had a law department, Councilman. And you should know that you're an attorney.
Thank you. So for example, Garden City, they've always, they've for the last many years contracted with the Cronin Law Firm, first the father and now the daughter, but she's, there's no law department in Garden City.
Garden City is much smaller than us.
Romulus.
Right. And I don't know their population, with due respect to them, it's a great city, but we are definitely a much bigger city than Garden City.
Right, but so...
So our, so our need, so like, for example, you know, we could use an example of, you know, I don't know, ABC Township, you know, up north has, you know, four hundred residents, well, they, they won't need a full-time attorney, you know, law department, but in our case, we definitely need somebody full-time. I, I see that. And again, this is no reflection on Gary's capabilities, very capable and then some, it's just we need somebody full-time.
Yeah, my question is, so, is I, we're, we're creating a new department under the administration.
We're, we're creating a budget, budget amendment. We've had an attorney, we're just going to have a full-time attorney now with a little bit more pay.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you guys. Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I know when we were looking at the, at the budget, I asked a couple of times, there were different parts where we were paying for attorneys. Are we no longer going to be using the labeled attorneys and all the other attorneys that we had and are we going to have Mrs. Hamadi? So we're going to have those plus Mrs. Hamadi? Correct, correct. Okay, so... So you have attorneys, for example, for the planning commission, the zoning board, et cetera, et cetera. Can we get a description maybe from the mayor of what does Javon tell us and will they be working at city hall nine to five or will they be stationed here? Do they have an office here? Can we just get a little bit of a description here because it seems pretty vague, in my opinion?
The attorney will be here full-time, so it's going to be every day, five days a week.
Five days?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're here, all the directors here, five days a week.
So in city hall, they'll be stationed.
So will, will the new corporation counsel have a place at city hall?
Yes.
Now, one of the things that was mentioned at the meeting two weeks ago is there'll be a transition period, of course, where Gary will stay on, helping whoever the new person that we select, you know, transition in, you know what I mean, teaching them all the ins and outs of what's going on in the city. Any other discussion items on that?
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Um, this is another thing we didn't, we weren't presented with, the criteria for this person when, I imagine it went out, I don't know, went out on something probably for bid, bid zap or whatever it's called, I don't know, I never heard it, but, I mean, wouldn't the qualifications be, and maybe she does, maybe, I heard she doesn't...
Well, I know the human resource directors read off some of her qualifications at the beginning of the meeting.
Is she, is this new person qualified in labor negotiations? You know, I don't know if that was one of the qualifications, I think it should be, you know, in, uh, real estate and land issues. Um, you know, we don't know what, you know, you put out for something this important and we have no idea what, what they are asking for, just an attorney.
So, so I want to clarify two things. Number one, per the charter, it is at the mayor's discretion who he or she selects for corporation counsel. So in other words, they could have hypothetically no criteria and just pick somebody. Then it's at our discretion as a body to approve or deny whoever they are appointing. So as far as going out, and I don't know the specific process that they use, but I'm just saying in general, I just want to make it clear, they don't have to do it that way. It's basically their discretion. I do know off the top of my head of a couple of different places where I know they've spoken with different law firms and this was one that was selected by the mayor.
Council Chair, we, we advertised it, I believe, we had over a dozen, maybe fifteen candidates. We went through about fifteen, at least fifteen candidates, we did advertise it several places. And so we did go through a bunch of candidates and we went through several interviews.
Council Chair. Okay, Councilman, go ahead.
Uh, I believe that, and I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Miyaki, that our corporation counsel was not involved in any contract negotiations, correct?
With the new attorney, you mean? Actually, I have at times in the past administration and sometimes earlier than that, where Mayor Pletko would say, I want you to end up being involved in this.
Yeah.
But in general, we've usually ended up going, either having labor counsel, which is the way it was during Mayor Canfield's administration, Mayor Pletko's administration, we usually had someone who would be labor counsel and then I would be brought in periodically to end up overseeing things. We currently have counsel, Mr. McColsky, from, McCullough, I'm sorry, from Ogletree Deacons, so...
Correct. That, that, that's, I just, I knew that was the way it was, but most of the time you're not involved with city...
Most of the time, I, and, and it's generally been considered, as someone who prosecutes for the city, it's generally been considered a bad idea to have people who are involved in negotiations also potentially being at odds with the, the police unions.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go ahead and take this to a vote. Uh, so all we're voting, just like we voted a couple of weeks back, is a budget, so basically you're allocating as a part of the budget, this dollar figure for whoever the administration is recommending as a corporation counsel. But I didn't want to put them together because they're, in my personal belief... But I didn't wanna put them together because they're, in my personal belief, it's two completely separate items. The first one is, do we agree to hire a new corporation counsel, which is what we're voting on right now, and changing the budget? And then the second one would be, are we going with the mayor's recommendation of corporation counsel after the interviews that they have done, him and the human resource director?
Council Chair?
Go ahead.
It was suggested that this go to a study session.
So what we could do on that, there's a motion on the table, okay? Unless somebody wants to amend their motion, you, who, the one that made the motion was Councilman Muscat, so unless you wanna amend your motion. If it does not pass, then we could go ahead and make a new motion to go to a study session. Is that correct, Gary? Or is there a different way they'd like to have it handled?
No, that's, I mean, it's actually up to you and to parliamentarian, but yes, you could end up doing this, and you could do it two ways. You could either do the motion, see if it passes or fails. If it does, then there would not be a need to go to a study session, or there could be a motion to refer it to a study session, and then that matter could be considered, and then you could have the vote on the main motion, which is.
At a different meeting, at a future meeting, correct?
Make the motion.
Okay, so he's not amending his motion, so at this particular point, with Councilman Muscat not amending his motion, we're gonna be voting on if we're gonna agree to make a budget amendment.
Let me clarify this, the, 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 the corporation counsel, did you say we could also make a motion to take us to a study session without Councilman Muscat amending his motion?
That is correct.
Okay, so I, I'd like to make a motion, we take this to a study session.
Okay, but now we'd have two motions on the table.
But you're, it's.
As we have a motion on the table.
It's an incidental motion, you can make a motion to refer to table, whatever you wanna do.
Right now?
Yeah, you could.
And Council Chair?
So, let me ask this, without taking a vote, I'm serious, I'm just trying to get the vibe here, anybody have at least even a slight interest, it's not a vote, at least a slight interest of taking it to a study session?
Yes.
You do, and then Councilman Wenzel, anybody else have any type of interest of taking it to a study session? Okay, so it's just Councilman Wenzel and Councilman Constan?
You gotta, what, to entertain his motion.
We gotta, we gotta go ahead.
You still have to entertain his motion.
Right, okay. So, well, but you see, once we approve it, once we approve your motion, that's it.
Well, but he's, according to corporation counsel, Councilman Wenzel's allowed to make a motion to move it to.
But it would have to be prior to yours, then.
Does it have to be before or after mine?
I've never heard that before.
If we do a budget amendment, think about it this way, corporation counsel.
Well, here's a parliamentarian.
If we do a budget amendment, and we agree to change the amendment, taking it to a study session is too late, we've already voted on it.
Well, Council, Councilman, if, if one of the people who wants to go to a study session doesn't make a motion, then you just go forward with the, with the main motion. It's considered to be, however, an incidental motion, like a motion table, you can always make a motion table.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and allow you to go ahead and make your motion, go ahead.
We'll allow him to make his motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we take item 8F and refer it to a study session.
It'd be 8A.
8A?
Yep.
No, this is the budget amendment, that's how we're talking about.
Right, we switched it around, remember, in the beginning, we made it 8A.
We switched it.
Okay. 8A, the budget amendment, hiring a full-time corporation counsel to a study session.
Okay, so item 8A, motion made by Councilman Wenzel, supported by Councilman Constan.
Please, please, please.
He wants to take it to a study session.
A budget amendment?
So any, any other discussion on a study session?
Here's my question, the, the amount, the salary, was that negotiated? How was that? Was it, was it, was negotiated?
Negotiated, negotiated.
Okay, so, any other discussion on that? Hearing all the discussions, motion by Councilman Wenzel, supported by Councilman Constan, to take this to a study session. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Okay?
Wait.
Council, um, Madam Clerk, can you go ahead?
Please take a roll call?
This is, take it to a study session, you wanna take a roll call, please?
Dave Abdallah?
No.
Moby Dune?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Robert Constan?
Yes.
Ray Muscat?
No.
And Tim Wenzel?
Yes.
Uh, motion defeated.
Okay, motion fails, so now, Councilman, go ahead and make your motion again.
I move that, uh, City Council.
Yeah, already have the motion.
Already have the motion, okay, so, all in favor of Councilman.
Council Chair, I, I just, quick discussion, I wanna reach, give my respect to both of the council members here, and I don't want them to think that I turned or voted no against anything, uh, this is a necessity, uh, you know, you're operating close to seventy thousand constituents in the city, we don't have a full-time corporation counsel. But I would also like to hear a little bit from, uh, Mr. Miyaki and, and how he feels about this, because I know what you have stated, but I would also like to hear from Mr. Miyaki regarding this.
As I stated at the last meeting.
Which I was not here, I was out of the country. I'm sorry, I did not watch just yet.
The mayor and the chief of staff discussed this with me some time ago, and the mayor indicated that he wanted me to continue as, as part of his team, and I said I wanted to continue as part of his team, but that essentially my role would be as the prosecutor, as opposed to being the corporation counsel, and I'd also help out on special projects and things like that. And I said I'd be glad to do that, and if that's how everyone wants to deal with it, then I will accept, you know, that role, and let's move on. And that's, that is basically what was discussed with respect to that. Do I have some other potential issues? Potentially, but not with respect to that. I will do whatever everyone wants.
Thank you for your services, Gary, and for real, thank you.
Yeah, the idea would be that I would continue on, and continuing the role I'm in until September the first.
Thank you.
Quick statement.
There's always been, there's always been discussion with this administration prior to getting you more backup and more assistance, especially since Mark Roberts no longer was a assistant city attorney, isn't that correct?
Yes, but we now have O'Reilly Rancilio to kind of basically do the same thing.
Okay, thank you. So motion by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Baydun, to do the budget amendment that was originally presented two weeks ago at the last previous council meeting. So all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, Madam Clerk, take roll call, please.
Dave Abdallah?
Yes.
Moby Dune?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Constan?
No.
Ray Muscat?
Yes.
And Tim Wenzel?
No.
Motion carries four to two.
Okay, motion carried, item 8A. We've had a change in, uh, agenda, so now it's item 8B, which is corporation counsel appointment confirmation.
Council Chair?
Uh, Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the appointment of Mrs. Nadia Hamadi as corporation counsel, term to begin September first, 2022, in accordance with section 5.13A and section 5.15 of the city charter as outlined in 8A.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydun and supported by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair?
Councilman Baydun, go ahead.
Let me just get a little quick introduction, I know our HR director did, but I know Mrs. Hamadi's in here, what's up? And I, just some kind wide words, wise words. Oh, come on up.
Good evening, council members, good e, good evening, Mayor. Sorry. Good evening, council members, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council Miyaki. It's an honor to be before you with this appointment. I know that the mayor has had several individuals who've interviewed for this position, or at least, I know now that there were a lot more than I had thought. I currently serve as an assistant attorney general for the state of Michigan, you probably have that information on my resume. I have, I do have real estate and land development background, and I also have a lot of experience with, um, working with corporation councils on many issues. Although I've never served as corporation counsel myself, I have lots of experience with municipal issues, um, from other aspects of my background, including in state government and in private practice. So I'm, I'm really honored for being here before you today and to have myself recognized as a potential candidate.
Okay, you can stay up there if you don't mind.
Sure.
So, um, it, it, you know, hope it all works out for the best interest of the residents, either way, depends on the votes, I don't wanna sway the vote in any way, shape, or form. But I do have a question, so this is a little bit based on, um, the business that I'm in. And I'm not sure who negotiated the contract, I'm not sure if it could be HR that I should ask, or our corporation counsel, so whoever feels they should answer that, come on up. But the question I have, and this is with all complete due respect to Ms. Nadia Hamadi, which I'm sure she will, she will do a great job, and, and you got some great credentials.
Council Chair, point of order.
Yes.
We already voted on it, like, can we just carry on?
No, we did not vote on this. No, 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 we did not.
Yeah, we did.
No, 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 no. No, no, we did not. We just voted to change the budget, we have not voted on approving it, not yet. So with that being the case.
Wow.
What I'd like to know is.
Did I miss something here?
Yeah, we did not vote on.
Yeah, we did not vote on this.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so the question I have is, and again, this is with, this is in regards to the position, not regards to you specifically, but I had some concerns, because there was not a lot of, um, experience specifically in Dearborn Heights, and experience in city work, obviously. And that doesn't necessarily mean somebody's gonna do a bad job, I'm sure she, she's very well-qualified, but with that being the case, is there an out clause in the contract, in the event, God forbid, if we voted yes on this, that it does not work out, or it is, it just, it just, it's just not working, hypothetically?
She's an at-will employee.
Go ahead.
And, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be offensive, but this is a question I need to know.
Understood, and appreciated. Um, this position is gonna be considered an at-will position, the salary was set when we posted for the position, so all the candidates who are applying were aware of that, as well as the total compensation value of the package. So we haven't executed an employment contract yet, we're waiting for approval.
Correct, but once you do, it'll be at-will, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
There won't be a contract, per se, a written contract, she'll be an employee.
So it will be an employment contract.
Well, there will be an employment contract.
Appointment, she said.
Appointment.
She said appointment, correct? Yeah.
No, I said, what I said was, there will not be a employment contract. Council Chair Abdallah's question was, would there be an out in the contract, and I heard you say there will not be an employment contract.
Uh, I see that, uh, Councilman Miyaki wants to, or corporate, uh, Council Miyaki wants to make a comment, so I will let him.
Yeah, if, if I may, under the city charter, the corporation counsel, just as I am right this moment, is always subject to being removed by the mayor at the will of the mayor at any time. Any contract that says anything to the contrary would be unenforceable.
Okay.
The only issue I would have is whether or not there's any sort of severance that would also be included. I, you were asked earlier, I wasn't involved in any sort of negotiations or interview process.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, and the salary was set, correct? You said it was set when it was posted?
Correct.
So it was not negotiated?
Correct, we posted for that position at that salary.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Council Chair? Just to be clear, there, there is no contract with, uh, for this position, right? There's no contract involved, if, because of just a regular appointment, like, like you were appointed, and like that.
So I, I'm sorry, so one of the things that I, go ahead, I'll, I'll let Mr. Miyaki answer.
Let's, let's talk about it a little bit in terms of employment. Normally, we're used to thinking of contracts as being something that is a written agreement. However, the vast majority of contracts that we enter into are verbal contracts. When it comes to employment contracts, usually what we do is say, you will serve as corporation counsel for the city of Dearborn Heights, subject to what's stated in this letter. And the person ends up accepting that by performing their duties, it's what's known as a unilateral contract. So whether or not there's a written employment agreement or otherwise, if there is a written employment agreement, it probably should end up coming back to this body, because this body is in a position where it actually has to approve any sort of appointment, has to concur in the appointment. However, it is not necessary to have an employee actually have a written employment agreement in order for them to act in this position. You could simply approve this, um, and essentially subject to what's already been stated, and then the person would have, uh, the terms and conditions of their employment dictated by prevailing city policies, as well as by what's stated in terms of the budget amendment and the charter.
Okay, thank you, corporation counsel. So we're gonna go ahead and take this thing to a vote?
Council Chair, I mean, I've, I've got some questions, and I, and I'd hate to bring them up, because I wanted to bring them up in a closed session, I mean, a study session, but it's something that I, I wanted answered. Do you, do you think you can handle this job solely by yourself?
She's not going to, we, Councilman, we have, we have other corporate, we have.
I know, but I'm saying, without, without hiring. Let me finish, without hiring any other, uh, people?
So I just wanna share that we did do a thorough interview and selection process with all of our candidates, explored all of these questions, um, I'm not sure that we wanna go through the interview process again here.
No, 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 I do that, I just wanted to see.
And we, we are still contracting with a couple of other attorney firms.
My question was, was to her, yeah.
As, as we had mentioned earlier.
I got, I got from, right.
Okay, but just keep in mind, Councilman, it can't be anything in regards to negotiations, because.
I'm not, well, no, I'm just asking.
Councilman, Miaki didn't do it by himself, and she's not gonna do it by herself.
Well, I know, but.
We always had.
Are we gonna have to hire other people that we have now?
But we already have, we, we already have them.
I know we have them now, so.
But it's not we're gonna hire anymore, we already have what we have.
So we're not gonna have to hire anyone else? You know that for a fact?
Council members, if I may, I, I will state that I did run my own firm, and I had dozens of cases, uh, that I balanced on my own in private practice, and, um, I was essentially a one-man show. I would hire, uh, different contractors, I would, um, align with other attorneys who had more specialized experience, and it's my understanding that that is similar to what I will be handling for the city, that I will be working with other attorneys who the city regularly works with, for example, in labor issues, and, for example, when, with Mr. Miyaki, if there's a prosecutorial issue. So I feel very confident in, in my abilities to manage a legal practice, including for the city of Dearborn Heights.
Okay, thank you, I, I mean, don't get me wrong, I have nothing against you whatsoever, it's the position that I have questions about, you know, be it you or anybody else, and do you foresee you requesting a secretary of any time to help you out?
It's my understanding that there are already administrative staff on hand if I need assistance, um, but as I stated before, I did manage my own practice on my own, uh, I did not have any full-time or part-time employees, I would, from time to time, um, contract out with individuals or, uh, work with other attorneys who had specialized experience. work with other attorneys who had specialized experience.
I have one more question. Like I said, I wanted to ask this in a study session, but I'm just going to ask it now. Are you, are you related to any, anybody in the City of Dearborn Heights?
Not to my knowledge. Well, I mean, do I have relatives who live in the City of Dearborn Heights?
Employees of Dearborn Heights.
Not to my knowledge.
All right, thank you. Thanks so much.
Okay. Last, just a quick question. You will only be working as a Corporation Council. You will not have your own firm still running, where you're running at least?
Correct. I will be exclusively working for the City of Dearborn Heights. I will not be representing any other clients. That is currently how I perform my role for the State of Michigan. I represent only the State of Michigan and no other individuals. When I worked for the State of Florida, it was the same. So I've not represented any private parties since I started state employment.
Thank you very much. So we're gonna go ahead and motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman Muscat, Corporation Council Appointment Confirmation. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, may I take a roll call, please?
Dave Abdallah?
Yes.
Moby Dun?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
No.
Ray Muscat?
Yes.
Tom Winsell?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Motion carried. Looking forward to working together. All right, next item on the agenda is item 8C, Tax Increment Finance Authority, TIFPA, and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Appointment.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council concur with mayoral appointment of Mrs. Tawana
Tanya.
Stani.
Tanya Sterlini.
Sterlini to both the Tax Increment Finance Authority, TIFPA, and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, term to expire December 2025. This appointment is to fill a vacant spot last held by Mr. Ron Semiano.
Semino.
Semino, as outlined in 8B.
Support.
Of 8C now. That becomes 8C now.
Oh, becomes 8C, excuse me.
Right. Okay, so motion made by Councilman Muscat on item 8C, seconded by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, I got a quick question for the mayor, as I always do. In this particular case, I don't know Ms. Tanya Sterlini specifically. Maybe I've met her, I'm not sure. Can you tell us a little bit about her, please, and why she's picked for this position?
Well, first, she's also on another commission with the E-Course Creek, and she's been doing an amazing job in that commission. Also, she was highly recommended by other commissioners on a TIFPA. She was recommended by them, actually. That's why I appointed her to this commission, because, because their recommendations for all, from the rest of the commissioners.
Okay, I see Tim.
Council Chair.
TIFPA Chair giving a thumbs up, so at least that's, that's a good sign. Councilman Brier, go ahead.
Yes, she also serves on the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association.
Okay.
And again, on.
Very happy with the job she does.
Yes, I'm happy with both positions.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
And she is a South End resident, though she does not live in the TIFPA district. She's very active in the community, and she works with a financial advisor. So she's very familiar with numbers and accounts and so forth.
Beautiful. I have more confidence now.
Counselor Chair, I had that she is a lifelong member of the City of Dearborn Heights.
Okay, even better. All right, I'm convinced, for myself at least. All right, so item 8C, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Constant. If there's no other discussions on that, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 8D. This is extension of agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the Dearborn Heights Professional Firefighters Union Local Number 1355-AFL-CIO.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the extension of the agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the Dearborn Heights Professional Firefighters Union Local Number 1355-AFL-CIO on a day-to-day basis until a new agreement is reached and approved as outlined in 8D.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I just want to emphasize to the administration that, you know, the brave men and women and our fire department always go above and beyond, put their lives out on the line every single day. And I hope that in the near future, we're going to be able to reach an agreement here as soon as possible. And that is just all I have to say. Because I'm not getting involved in any negotiations, but I want you to know, and I urge this administration to please work alongside and get to some type of solution for them. Thank you.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Winsell.
Aside from the obvious fact that they put their lives on the line every day, the members of Local 1355 do a lot of other things, charitable things for the community, volunteer their, their union has a committee where they donate to different nonprofit charities, and they do a fantastic job in the committee and the community. And my hat, my hat's off to them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so motion 8D, motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman Muscat. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 8E. This is budget amendment, Parks and Recreation Budget.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Comptroller to amend the Parks and Recreation Budget to reflect the approval of the resurfacing of the Central Park parking lot in the amount of $112,567 to L's Asphalt Paving Company as outlined in 8D.
Okay.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Bedun, this is 8E.
I'm sorry, 8E.
Yeah.
I didn't change.
Item 8E, motion made by Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Winsell. Any discussion on that?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat, go ahead.
Remind me of how this is being paid for?
Okay, so this is, I spoke with our Director, Kim Lawrence. Oh, she's right there. Well, there she is. All right.
Hi.
So talk about what we talked about.
Basically, we were in the middle of the project. It was funds from last year's budget. So this had to be an increase to be able to pay for this project. We've already approved the bid to go to it because of the Spirit Festival and because of weather, we weren't able to get it completed in '21, but it was originally budgeted in the '21-'22 budget. I don't know if that answers your question.
And I could show some of the council members.
No, that's, I just, I just wanted a quick.
Yeah, but just to give you guys a heads up, because I spoke with the director, she had on six, one of 22, one, two, three, four, five, six bids on this. And this was the company that was selected, so.
Okay, I just wanted a quick reminder.
Sure.
Didn't have to go through.
No, that's why I called her, because I needed a reminder.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, with regards to where it's coming from, it's coming from the general fund. So it's not budgeted. We're not decreasing any other account. We're just increasing. So we're dipping into our savings, pretty much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Motion made by Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Winsell. Any other discussions on that? Hearing none, let's go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item AF. And this is lease and concession agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the Isa Brothers LLC and Revive Golf Management LLC.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the Isa Brothers LLC and review the Golf Management LLC for the lease, sublease and operation of the Warren Valley Golf Course and to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreements on behalf of the city as outlined, I'm sorry, the operations of the Warren Valley Golf Course to authorize the mayor and city to sign the agreements on behalf of the city as outlined in 8D?
F.
F.
F. What am I doing?
Okay. Any second on that? Any second on that? Okay. So hearing no second, then we can't take them.
Counselor.
Yes.
I move that we move.
Hold on.
Referring this.
Second here, Counselor Chair.
We have a study session.
Go ahead. We didn't get a second.
We didn't get a second. So if you don't get a second, you don't vote. It fails.
If the motion fails for lack of support.
Counselor Chair, may I?
Wait, let's just make sure. Go ahead.
If there is no second, then the motion fails for lack of support.
Counselor Chair.
But can be brought back to a different council meeting.
That is correct.
Correct.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
You know, this weighs very heavy on me. And not to sound a little weird or anything, but I, I sat up quite a bit last night in bed praying. I make a decision that impacts the entire city with a lot of money. And before we go forward on this, no matter who it is that, that operates this golf course, needs help, no one person can do this. It's, it's going to be an impossible task. When these bids went out, people bid on what they saw, and what they saw is not there today. And they need help. And I once mentioned that this golf course needs to be under Parks and Rec, okay? So we can get grant money. And I also mentioned something about a millage to go to the golf course.
I'm gonna stop you right there, Counsel.
No, hold on.
Point of order, you can't do that. Go ahead.
I also mentioned that we were gonna, you know, I mentioned a millage of a half a percent millage.
No.
And Counselor, please, I don't interrupt you, please don't interrupt me again, okay? You can say it all you want. When you, when you get the chance to vote, you can vote no. I proposed a half a mil millage for the golf course, okay? Which would bring in approximately anywhere between 1 million to 1.7 million, depending on how we write it. And it goes to the voters of the city to vote on. This golf course can be a pristine 18-hole golf course. I don't know about 36 holes. There aren't very many 36-hole golf courses in the entire state of Michigan. Okay? And I know it's a Donald Ross golf course, but we've got to get over that point, okay? We've got to get over that. Place that half the golf course is underwater, so what good does it do? So that needs help. And I don't think, bless you. And I'd like to see, there's a lot of things in this contract that doesn't help out the city, and it doesn't really help the person taking it over. So again, I'm at the point where I really don't know what to do, okay? And, and if we, we want this golf course to succeed, it should be under Parks and Rec where we can get money. And we, we didn't move on that. We didn't move on that at all. We said this a long time ago. What are we passing the baton for all the time? We pass the baton. We need, we need to do something for the golf course, okay? And I think if we had a half a mil and to generate that kind of money, we could have one of the best golf courses around. Much better than Glenhurst, much better than what they have in Livonia, much better than what they have in Dearborn, and a whole lot better than what they have in Inkster, okay? So that's my feelings on this, and I truly don't know what to do.
Okay, so we still have a motion on the table that has not been seconded.
Correct.
So is there anybody that's seconding it?
For sake of discussion, I will second.
Okay, so motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Is there any discussion on that?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Can we also move this to a study session to really look at this contract a little closer?
We can. So if this is defeated, then somebody else can make a second motion to move it to a study session, if we choose. Yes, go ahead.
A couple of points. One of the things that Mr. Schenk did say is that this was time-sensitive in terms of Revive being involved in this, and in terms of Isa Brothers being involved in it because of the condition of the greens, I believe is the case. So I wanted to make sure that you understand that time is of the essence with respect to anything that you do, with respect to this matter. And like I said in the last time, you can bring a motion, or you can make a motion to refer a motion or a matter to a study session.
Counselor Chair.
Counselor Chair.
One second, the council will finish.
If, say we pass this, how, how hard would it be to put this thing under Parks and Rec? How difficult would it be to put this under Parks and Rec? And how difficult will it be to write something for a millage that we could have the voters vote on?
I think the problem would be that your language would have to do with something, the, the difficulty is you have to have an accurate statement in terms of.
For Parks and Rec, you have the millage for Parks and Recreation, and then money can be allocated to the golf course from Parks and Recreation, like we do all the time when we move money around.
Might be able to do that. I would have to, I have concerns in terms of making sure that we have enough funding to be able to do that.
What do you mean funding to do what?
I mean, in terms of allowable millage. I, I don't know what our limit is under state law.
Well, we keep increasing millages for other things, like for sanitation in Act 345.
Sometimes there are special millages.
Well, this would be a special millage. I mean, you could have a time-sensitive millage of, say, five years.
I'm just saying it's not as easy as something that you have a special millage for.
Some of the other council members. Councilman Winsell, go ahead.
Yeah, this being time-sensitive now is a joke. This was time-sensitive in March, not in July. It's done. I mean, the greens, we had experts speaking. The greens are gone anyway. I mean, and if we go by this agreement, the, nothing's going to be done until the city takes care of everything, and that's going to be winter time or next spring anyway. So being time-sensitive, it's, it's hilarious to even hear that, because this was time-sensitive five months ago, not now.
Counselor.
I mean, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's just time finish this first.
No, no, I mean, I want to, the statement he made is not a true statement. We do have a company right here that's ready to take over. The minute you guys approve, approve this, they can just come in. And they do have a timeline when things have to get done. So we do have a company.
So what I'll do is, I will allow the council to finish his thought. And then after he's done, I will allow the gentleman to come up here and give us just a brief vision. And I know you're a part of the Isa Brothers, correct? Okay.
So Councilman, finish your thought. I spoke with, with this gentleman a lot. And now, if, if, if this was okayed, which you know, I'll see how I can, because it's nothing to do with the RFP that went out last in March, but who, he would do this for free? Would you do this for free?
Okay.
Who would pay you? Who would pay you?
Wait.
No, who would pay, who would pay you to get the golf course to?
Councilman? So whatever questions you're asking, if somebody's on Zoom or somebody's watching this on TV, they will not be able to hear the gentleman. So why don't you ask all your questions? Let me know when you're done.
Okay.
I'll have the gentleman come up and answer the questions for you.
Okay, and a couple other things is.
Come on up, sir.
Councilman Muscat said, let's forget about this being a Donald Ross golf course. That's not true, because Jason here will, he'll explain that Donald Ross has the foundation where there might be something in there, right, for, toward the golf course, right? And if we just say, hey, screw Donald Ross, and that, that money's not available.
But he didn't say that.
I didn't say that.
No, I'm saying, it's, you know, it's, he said it's a Donald Ross, let's forget about that.
No, you're, you're taking it out of context. I said, let's forget about the thought of it being, so we could do the right thing.
Yeah.
It could have been anybody's golf, could be a Jack Nicklaus golf course.
Well, anytime, I'm saying, I don't know, I'm just saying, mention it. It might be, once you alter one hole, they'll say, okay, forget it, we don't want any part of it anymore, because it's not my, my great grandfather's original design. But anyway, also, there's, you know, there's an organization that's being started up. It's, you know, Friends of Warren Valley Golf Course. And there's, there's interest in this. And I've gotten several calls from different organizations, and I've contacted, contacted with different organizations, Friends of the Rouge, different organizations that are interested in, in green spaces and wetlands. And, you know, there's talk out there that they want this golf course, you know, to remain the way it is. And there can be drainage, drainage put into this golf course without interfering on this, any of the 36 holes. There could be wetlands, rain gardens put in there. And the Friends of the Rouge are interested in, in getting involved with the Friends of Warren Valley Golf Course.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, so go ahead and answer the gentleman, the councilman's questions, then Robert Constant, you have something to say?
Yeah.
I think Ali Deeb also has input.
I'm sure there'll be some follow-up questions, so if I missed one, please let me know, right?
The question I was directed towards you was, who would be paying you for your services from day one?
There is, yeah, at day one, our services technically start on April 1st, 2023. That being said, we have volunteered to consult with the city over the next nine months. So what we're talking about doing is, we've brought in one of the top agronomy teams in the country. In fact, our Director of Agronomy is over there right now. They manage 35 golf courses called Brown Golf Management. They'd be, they'd be working directly with us. That's their expertise is agronomy, right? And so I know at one point you were advocating, you know, that Davy or another management company was involved. It's much, you know, a company very similar to Davy, very similar in size and a great reputation for what they do on grounds. Between now and next April, and we have the, the full plan laid out, it's starting August 1st. I mean, our plan is tomorrow to be in Mayor's office on execution, right? Because we need to, within August, get a superintendent in there, charge up the irrigation system, start air riding, which is basically putting holes within the greens so that we can be laying seed, seeing if the seed even, once we do start pounding all of the grass with water, if the grass responds at all and if it grows. If it doesn't, the only possibility to get that golf course open next year is going to be re-sodding the greens that are dead, right? That process has to be occurring. I mean, I, I don't think we can pull it off if we start September 1st. Not saying that we wouldn't do this, I'm saying that we probably aren't going to be able to open the golf course in 2024, right? So if we're going to be opening the golf course next year in 2023, it is important that we get started immediately.
Okay, but the, the question was, you know, you just mentioned all these things, having a superintendent. Now, they're, they're all volunteering or time?
Well, they're partners of our management company, so yes, sir.
So they went, I mean, I'm just, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at, what I'm trying to get at is.
I need to address this point. Revive will be a party to a contract. This is not volunteering. If it's stated as volunteering, it's not, it's not a fair assessment. Contract, Paragraph 3, essentially says that after the city completes its assessment and obtains a certificate of compliance and/or certificate of occupancy for the golf course, and the city utilizing concessionaire. and the city utilizing concessioneer, which is Revive, meets the maintenance requirements of the golf courses contained in Exhibit A, the concessioneer shall assume the full operation and that's when they start paying. So these are all contractual commitments. If anyone wants to say they're volunteering, that's not what this agreement says. They will be contractually bound to do this, but we will be contractually bound to use them consistent with Exhibit B and consistent with Exhibit A.
Contract with the city, is that correct? Mr. Miyake, is it a contract with the city, is that correct?
It is a contract with the city and with Isa Brothers LLC. So we are, it's a three-party agreement, just to make sure we're understand. Everyone has obligations to each other and Revive is looked at as being part of Team Isa. But essentially what that means is they are helping us both together, namely helping the city to end up operating and managing both the golf course and the banquet facility. The concessioneer basically has more of a concession arrangement. Isa Brothers, being the tenant, will have more of a traditional landlord-tenant sort of relationship with the city with respect to the banquet facility.
You know, I just want to make this clear with my question. I don't want anybody to misunderstand it. It's, once this company comes in, it's going to cost somebody money and it's probably going to be partially the city. Dearborn Heights is going to have to start paying money out. And one of the things they have to do is buy all this equipment, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment. This is something, you know, that, this was not on the original RFP. There was not a mention of the city buying equipment or the city maintaining all the facilities, getting up to, in the Gulf, it was golf-ready. You know, it was take over the golf course. RFP is take over the golf course. That's the way it was. Council Chair, you stated that in our last meeting, that's what you were concerned about.
But let's keep in mind though, what we thought, all of us, including I think the person that's vying for this particular golf course, what all of us thought we were getting is not what we, what all of us got. And I can speak firsthand myself, as I walked through the golf course with a contractor and just went to every section of the golf course, it is not in shape, and I'm not a golfer, I'm saying I'm not a golfer. It's definitely not in shape to play with, but I know real estate. It is not in shape to move into, it is not in shape to eat at, it is not in shape to go to the bathroom there. It is not in shape to go to the bar there, it is not in shape to sit outside, it is not in shape to stand by the outside structure. There's a lot of work to be done there.
Exactly, that's, I mean, that's my point. This is not the original FRP.
Right, but it was a game changer. It changed everything.
And at that, at that point in March, if you put a hundred thousand, a couple hundred thousand dollars into the golf course, you had been looking pretty good. Now it's 1.5 million.
With due respect, and again, I know real estate, no way a couple hundred thousand dollars would have had that place up and running. A million percent.
You don't know about golf courses.
I don't know golf, but I know construction.
Even if you had a couple hundred thousand dollars, what would you do with it without the equipment to maintain the course?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Councilman, in all fairness, we gotta get other council members to speak to. Go ahead, let me make your last statement.
I'm fine.
Just speak a little bit about the equipment if I could. We've spent the last three months, I mean, this has been a full-time job to source all this equipment. Right now, getting equipment is on back order, new equipment, nine to 12 months. So we have all the equipment lined up, ready to, in some instances, we need to lease it because you can't acquire it. Some is used equipment, which is really cost-effective and cheap in order to start mowing. I mean, we're talking $15,000 for 80,000 mowers that are used. They have 3,000 hours, but they'll last a few years and they'll allow us to start doing the work. So to get to this point, it isn't like, you know, we're just going to go in and figure this out. We've been planning for three months to start immediately executing on this. We have, I mean, our golf professional is here, our Director of Agronomy is here. Not only that, I mean, these guys are literally moving to the city of Dearborn Heights for this project. This is something that, you know, we're taking very seriously and we understand what we've gotten into. We've been there several times a week for the last three months.
Okay, thank you. So was there anything else on your end, sir?
Okay, he brought up a point that, you know, since I kind of have before a little bit, but if this was put out in March that the city was going to buy all this equipment and get the whole course golf-ready, I think we would have had, and I'm assuming, but I think we would have had a lot more bidders on this project. And it's unfair that this is offered now to only one of the bidders.
Okay, and I can appreciate that thought, but at the same time, it's not time to play Monday morning quarterback right now. Right now, we gotta move forward because while this thing is being waited on, the grass, the whole course is just getting worse and worse and worse. And so we don't have time to wait on this thing. This thing, decision's got to be made quickly. Mr. Deep, do you have something you had to say?
No, I just, I just want to indicate that Mr. Piersel and I are working closely on the condition assessment part. I'm not a golf expert. I rely on golf experts in terms of what, you know, the conditions that the greens need to be. But I can tell you, on construction and on the engineering side, what we don't have today, we didn't have back in March. So things, the condition of the irrigation system was just as bad in March as it is today. The pumps were still the same. So we still, we didn't have money to do anything in March with upgrade to the system and we still don't have money in the budget to do it today. So we still have unknown things. We've done quite a bit of condition assessment like the cart pass, like the bridges, the inspection of the electrical. But there are still things that need to be done to this facility, whether, you know, three months ago or today, before we can get it up and running. So I rely on golf experts to tell me what I need to do to keep the greens alive. But I also have my own assessment and my own estimates on some of the structural, the condition, engineering things that we need to do, the bridges, the cart pass, the asphalt, that kind of stuff. So we do have, you know, I add to his estimate, which you guys have in your Exhibits A and B. You know, we still have our own stuff that we need to look at.
Okay, so I've got a couple of questions in this contract because it's already obviously been, the motion's been made and seconded, so I had some questions. Number one, the first item for me is number nine in the contract. The concern that I had in that one is the wording, the tenant anticipates making a significant investment in the premises of approximately $3.4 million. The problem that I had for that is the word anticipates, which does not commit the Isa Brothers to go ahead and put that money into it. Now, mind you, it could end up being more. But on my end with the city, I just want to make sure we are protected in that. One of the reasons I picked Isa Brothers because they were taking on the banquet facility and the golf course and their history and record of being able to run businesses, that's why I personally picked them based on the choices that we had in front of us, okay?
Recall that, sir.
So I don't like the word anticipates on item number nine in the contract. I'd rather have a specific amount that they are committing to. So in this case, the word anticipates would have to be taken out. And we'd have to, the tenant is making an investment of $3.4 million. That's why I prefer in there.
Council Chair.
Yes.
If I may, and obviously I've had a prior communications with respect to this issue. The wording, if that's what you're looking for, would be shall make. And it could be 3.4, it could be something else. But Mr. Abdalhak asked me a question. I answered it honestly because I figured that's what I'm supposed to do. And that's an issue. The anticipates is not a promise. It is not contractually enforceable. It is considered to be in the nature of an aspirational thing that would be wanted.
Right, and the plainer English version of it is, I was gonna pay 3.4 million, but I was only able to do one.
Exactly.
So, so that would need to be changed in the contract. The other items I had in the contract and I went through it is a question, I'm not sure who'd answer that, but when I say maintenance of the parking lot, let me be more specific. That place is crater heaven. I mean, it's got a lot of craters and if you don't believe me, I could prove it to you in my car. Yeah, so with that being the case, who will be maintaining slash possibly, and I'm not committing, I don't know, replacing the parking lot, if that's what's needed? I mean, I don't know who's got to assess it, but who would be paying for that?
The city.
The city, okay, thank you. Next question I had, certificate of occupancy by the city. Obviously, we're going to be requiring a certificate of occupancy. The concern with that is, one of the things that probably will not pass, obviously, is the parking lot. One of the things that will not pass, obviously, is the bridge there. One of the things that will not pass would be the golf trail. That's not going to pass. You got bricks almost falling apart on the building. And again, I am not a construction expert by any stretch of the imagination, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. With that being the case, the concern that I've got is similar to like in my business. When we commit to providing a certificate of occupancy, we are committing to providing a certificate of occupancy open-ended. Meaning that number could be 10,000, 200,000, 3 million or 40 million. And if we commit to providing a certificate of occupancy, we're committing to do that no matter what the cost is. That's a little concerning because it's a number that we don't know. Now typically, in a transaction, you put a condition, you know, subject to seeing the city inspection, but in this case, it's kind of a little bit of a conflict of interest because we're doing a city inspection on our own property. But still, you make it subject to seeing the city inspection or you cap it. You say you will do the repairs for a certificate of occupancy, but no more than X. I'd prefer one of those two things in there so that we're not committed to an open-ended amount that we don't know what it's going to be. Yes?
Two points on that. One of them is, is there are questions with respect to the city actually having to get a certificate of occupancy for its own properties. All right, so what you're seeing, again, is a contractual obligation. We just have to comply with the law. Is the law necessarily binding on us to the same degree that it would be on a private property owner? Okay, but the second thing is, is that that, in terms of an evaluation of cost, is a concern.
Open-ended right now.
Well.
And we don't know what the number is.
It's a concern in Exhibit B as well.
Right, okay. Next question I've got, we have on there that they will be making improvements on the property. And I've seen each and every one of Mr. Isa's properties and consistently, depends on the particular field it's in, it's one of the best in the field, in the business. I mean, whether it's a car wash or the used car lot or whatever, or the one on Greenfield, the hall, I mean, consistently, I've been to all of them, they're all Class A operations. But that does not necessarily guarantee that we will get a Class A operation. So the question is, whatever improvements that will be made, in my opinion, should be subject to landlord or city approval. Because, and I'm using a hypothetical here.
It is.
It does have subject to approval, okay. Because, you know, my concern, let's say he decides to make it pink or lime green or whatever, or make it 20 stories, I mean, whatever it is, I want to make sure that we have a say-so in five ways. Okay, perfect. Next question that I had is on item number 11. Item number 11 in the contract. Okay, it says- Yeah, however removable, trade fixture. Why, why the act, why cannot, why it can be terminated? But I get, why, oh, I'm sorry. The question I had is, why is it automatically terminated?
Because essentially you could end up having some other governmental entity use its power of eminent domain. For example, the feds could come in and obliterate our ability to even own the golf course anymore, in which case no one would have any contractual obligations to each other. I mean, you normally don't see this, right? But you always end up having a provision to deal with these types of situations. Say someone said, hey, you know what, State of Michigan says we need this for whatever.
A highway.
Exactly, then, you know.
Okay, but you're comfortable with that clause, correct?
Yes.
Okay, next one I had is, well, we kind of got that information, but I want to get a little bit more specific. Well, you kind of addressed it earlier, is who will be running the golf course? Will they be subcontracted? Who will they be answering to? And is the verbiage comfortable enough for you for that?
In terms of how they would run?
The operation, the gentleman right there on the golf course. And by the way, I like that, Mr. Isa, because I, I respect you for the fact, and at one of the council meetings, and you did a Ray Muscat, I mean, I like that, where you admitted, you know, I don't know golf, so therefore I'm not going to take on that part of the operation. I'm going to bring in somebody that does know golf to run the golf part of the operation. So I respect you for that because you admitted, like I'm admitting, I don't know golf. So I'm glad you got somebody, so they'd be subcontractor of, you said it earlier, unfortunately.
They are also a party of us, but they have to, they have mutual obligations with regard to this.
Correct.
I think that's more of a business decision as opposed to a legal issue or something that I would need to point out. I would tend to believe that Mr. Isa, given his outstanding business reputation, would have chosen Revive based on them having a like reputation.
Okay, next clause I had a problem with or a challenge with, I hate to use the word problem, is clause number four under the term. It says the initial term should be for 10 years with two five-year renewal terms. And it goes on blah, 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 blah. But this is where I had a challenge with this. The renewal terms shall be on the same terms as the initial term and are triggered by the tenant providing notice to the landlord of its intent to renew not less than six months prior to the end of the term. So this term, let's use a hypothetical, the Isa Brothers take on the full 20 years because it's a 10-year contract with additional two five-year options. So let's pretend, which, when I say let's pretend, I mean, obviously with such investment, they're going to want to stay the full 20 years. But 20 years from now, I do have a concern that, and of course, maybe we all live that long, but I do have a concern that it's going to be on the same rental amount, which is $5,000 that we have today. Now, the challenge that I've got with that is you've got an operation right now that is challenging or you got a facility that is challenging, to say the least, okay? It needs work. And we're giving it to them at $5,000 to provide a great customer service to the residents in our city. I get that. And I've even had some residents ask, you know, what about the profit? What about this? We are not in the business of running a business for a profit. We're in a business of providing a service to our residents. And if it means we take a little bit of a bite on that, I'm okay with that personally. I'm not speaking as a body. But I do have a problem when this place is up and running and the Class A operation, like he anticipates, and I'm sure he will be doing that, $5,000 20 years from now with inflation is pennies. I have a problem with that personally. I'd like to see that inflated something more reasonable for 20 years from now. So now we'd be talking about, you know, 2000, what is that, 45 or 43 or 42?
Two points on that.
Okay.
One of them is, if there's a commitment with respect to the 3.4 or a contractually binding commitment, one could offset that and say, look, they're giving us money upfront, so they're going to do better on the back end.
Right.
But we don't have that commitment right now, as we've already discussed in terms of, it's not a promise, it's an anticipation.
Correct.
So I understand what your point is, that there should be an escalator.
45, give or take, in the year 2045, 5,000 a month is too low.
But the point of negotiating this was to negotiate it based on 3.4 and then you're going to be able to continue. The difficulty, you know, and again, this is a business decision on your end. If you think that there should be an escalator, I could see that, but frankly, the way we were kind of angling was more 3.4, if you've got a firm commitment upfront and they're going to start making those, then maybe you give them a better lease term with the idea that they've ended up making a substantial commitment to the city.
But you could potentially give them a 30, 40-year lease at $5,000 a month. That's low. And any Realtor will tell you that's low. And I get the 3.4 million, but I'm just telling you, $5,000 is low.
Right.
Rental, you know, homes that are 1,000, 1,100 square feet are renting for 1,500 and 1,800 a month.
The idea would be, you could look at it as amortizing the 3.4 over the course of 20 years and say, they're actually paying something that would be consistent with like $230,000 per year in terms of rent. From my standpoint, the only thing I would have a concern about, and that's why I've said I have a concern, is that there is not a firm contractual commitment about that 3.4.
And the last two questions, the golf course revenue, 10%, I've got that. But what about the banquet hall revenue? What would we be receiving for the banquet?
There is no, there's no percentage fee with respect to that.
And that's the concern.
There's 10% of all liquor revenue. That includes-
I believe it was just the golf course, or is the banquet hall included in the 10%?
It's 10% of gross green fees. The green fees do not include, do not include the banquet facility.
So there is also 10% of net liquor fees.
The liquor fees, right, but that's from the bar. But not, so here's what I'm saying. So the gentleman's going to be investing 3.4 million and I presume a good part of it will be on the banquet hall. When you expand that, that banquet hall's got to be expanded and of course improved and of course aesthetically, it's got to look nicer to be op, to be functional slash profitable. But with that being the case, I feel that we should be getting a percentage from that banquet hall also in addition to the green fees, because that's where the profit is on that particular golf course.
For example, all weddings are going to sell, you know, a good portion of every wedding sales, liquor sales, the city would receive.
That's where you make all your money.
But you'll make from the liquor, I know, but if, so if my son does a wedding there and there's hypothetically liquor sales, we'll make 10% on that. If my son goes and golfs before he does his wedding reception, we'll make 10% on that. But the wedding hall that, let's say I pay for, whoever pays for it, $10,000, we as a city make nothing on that.
That is correct.
Okay, I just want to make it clear to the council.
The council chair?
Yes.
In any sort of sporting venue, you don't make money on food, you make money on liquor. That is the, no matter where you go to bowling alleys, you go to Comerica Park, $7.50 for a small little bottle of beer, that's where they make their money.
But the place is going to be built out with nothing coming to us.
I understand that, but that's how the nature of that business works.
And then the last question, similar to real estate, and I hate to put you on the spot, Mr. Isa, but I, I, I want to ask, somebody's got to answer this question. Up to three point four million, in real estate, a lot of times we ask for proof of funds or proof of a loan or anything. And, and, and I, God bless him, I know he's an extremely successful businessman, but has there been any type of verification that those funds are accessible slash available?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so the concern that I've got there, somebody purchases a property, and I don't need to know your personal stuff, but let's just say hypoth, just, I'm throwing it out there because these are things that have to be addressed. The gentleman comes in and says, you know, I, I'm sorry, I thought it was going to be three point four million. I was only able to come up with two thousand dollars. At that point, what do we do? I'm, I'm using extreme here, but let's say two million dollars, let's say two and a half million dollars.
Because there's.
So I don't know if it's okay to ask him directly and if he's comfortable answering directly. I, I don't know if you're comfortable, it's up to you.
I, I think, I think.
No, no. I, I understand. All I'm asking is, is if anybody verified that the money is accessible. Because that, in a typical real estate transaction, that's one of the first things that's done, honestly.
And, and I am not aware that that has been done and part of it had to do with the three point four, which is not a binding contractual commitment.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's, essentially you're accepting it on faith that he's going to end up making the investment. And so, you know, verifying that he has funds available would not necessarily make any difference in this type of transaction. Namely, we could verify it, but he still doesn't have to end up giving it to us.
No, 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 but if we change the verbiage to say we'll be making a commitment of three point four million.
We could do that and include the additional type of language that you're saying. Some sort of, you know, letter, letter of credit or something along those lines. Yes, kind of like what was in the other one.
Thank you.
Council chair?
Council.
And I'm just like hypothetically speaking, and I'm just going to kind of like paint a picture here. When, when I, when I did the operation on the buildout of this new business that I opened up, the guy next door to me did similar to what I did, he spent about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'd like to believe I put a lot less than that. And I'd like to believe that I knew the guy that was tiling the floor gave me a really good deal. Guy that was painting really gave me a great deal. So ultimately, and, and I'm not to say that the Isa brothers don't need to spend three point four million dollars because the place definitely does need that. But let's just say that the aesthetics looks great and, and I'm just playing devil's advocate and everything looks amazing. And he did it all under two million dollars. You know?
Based on this contract, he'd be within the contract.
Okay, so based on this contract?
Based on the way it's written currently, yes.
Okay. My, now, now I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate on, on, on the discussion that we were just having. But my only question here is on this contract, which, you know, I, I really want to move forward on this, but I have one pill really hard to swallow is that the city's obligation of potentially at low close to a million dollars and at high, one point, almost close to one point eight. And I can't see myself agreeing to that because, you know, on, on many different occasions that are last budget hearing, David Saputo told us that we are way overspending. So where does the city hold its responsibility of at the lower, at the high? And I'm just going to make it very clear for the record, being one of the highest millages in the city, I mean, in the state, I am definitely not for putting a millage on the taxpayers because I am not okay with that. I don't want to see my taxes go up any more than they've already went, especially with inflation being at an all-time high with the highest increase of inflation since two thousand and eight.
Okay, so I can answer you potentially on that, but very similar to when we bought the golf course, God rest his soul, our past mayor, we quote-unquote didn't have any money and suddenly one more million out of the general fund. So there is money available to the general fund.
I know, but we were just told by our, at our last budget hearing that we don't have the money to continue to spend the way we've been spending. This administration is, I mean, I'm. Right, so.
Is your question to the mayor directly?
To the mayor, to Gary, maybe our, maybe our chief of staff, anybody. I mean, I, I don't see ourselves being able to afford one point seven, I'm just being honest.
Where's the money coming from? Good question, councilman.
Good question. You know? One point seven million dollars, I mean, I'm just curious. And, and at the end of the day, we have a fiduciary duty here.
It's from Marianna, thank you, Marianna, it was very nice of you.
You're absolutely correct. We do not have the funds as unrestricted general fund money. There is the potential to use some of the ARPA funds that are coming that are unrestricted to try to renovate that, given that it's a portion of it is a flood zone. So it technically could be for water and sewer, but we have to explore that further. We are recommending an ARPA management company at the next council meeting who will help us determine what type of projects we could use for ARPA funds, including the golf course. We could make a portion of the golf course in the end be a park zone and get funding from Parks and Recs, as it has been mentioned by many residents. All of this takes time and exploration. At the moment, we don't necessarily have the money. I mean, we do, we do have enough in the general fund right now, but it would, the planet, like, we would have nothing left if we were to spend it right away.
That's a bad investment.
Okay, so for the residents around Zoom and in the audience and watching on television, can you please just give a briefing of what the ARPA funds are? Because we in government know it, but some people don't know it.
Okay, the ARPA funds are twenty-four million dollars that were allocated to the city last year. We're getting the second portion of it very soon. So we applied for the second disbursement of it, so we're about to be getting about twelve million dollars. We went out for bids to get a management company with regards to the ARPA funds because the funds are very restricted to specific projects. In particular, with regards to water and sewer, broadband, infrastructure, COVID relief, et cetera. So again, that's why we need that management company to determine specifically how we could spend it. There is the potential of spending it for flood zone areas, including the golf course. So again, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in the cart paths, including the fact that the river is eating up part of the cart paths because it's falling into the river. So those are the type of projects that our city engineer and the management company would potentially explore on how we could get some funding for that.
Would that include buying pumps and things of that nature? To pump the water off the course and for irrigation?
Yes, possible, yes. So that, that's possible. So as we indicated before, we're looking at the, at the golf course because part of it is in the wetland. And actually more than the wetland that we have on paper, because of the flood, flooding that we, we had before, parts of the golf course that are not on, on paper as wetland are becoming wet because they're not properly drained. And we also get, because we have erosion problems in the river. So we're working with the county to do two things. The assessments on the golf course will indicate what areas will be worth leaving, you know, you know, designate them as flood plain areas and then therefore qualifying for funding to mitigate that. And then to kill two birds with one stone, basically renovate and upgrade the golf course plus do something with the flood mitigation. So we can do two things, but we need further studies. And one of the options, when you, when you go back to funding, where are we going to get the money to do that? Is, is the ARPA. And we have a, the bid, as, as Mariana indicated, with experts on that. So we are making sure that we qualify for every, or we use every dollar we qualify for under the ARPA grant.
Okay, and I just want to clarify that you can't, just, I'm sorry, just one second. I just want to clarify to the residents, if the funds come into the city, but it is not at our total A to Z discretion as far as what we use it for, there's definitely criteria.
They're restricted funds. So, so there are guidelines as to what you can and can't use them for. Can and cannot use them for. So by, by allocating parts, which is true, parts of the golf course are in the flood zone. And they are, you know, we're doing flood mitigation, it's sewers and infrastructure. So we're hoping that with this company, we, we will use as much of that funding under those criterias as we can to alleviate us from having to ask for, for millage or any other source. Yeah, Mr. Lee, so, so my last thing is, we right now would be taking on an obligation with a hypothetical or a potential no right now. Like right now, if ARPA comes back and tells us you can't use that, then we're contractually obligated to come up either the higher the low, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And the one thing I was going to note is that if we do things with ARPA money, we do not necessarily have the ability to control who we select, except through using appropriate competitive, competitive bidding in order to choose the contractor. So by doing it with Revive, we are not necessarily going to be in a position where we can end up using the funds because they may not have been selected through the process required by, as Mr. Jamal would often say, two hundred CFR, and which would require some sort of competitive bidding. And some of this is not equipment, it's labor. About two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on low-end labor and, I think, four hundred and fifty-four? Four hundred ninety-four? I'm having a hard time because Exhibit B is really small in terms of the high-end estimate.
So this company will not be doing any flood mitigation. We will control the flood mitigation. So we will be putting the contracts out for bid, select contractors. And the way we intend to do it is to follow the guidelines of the ARPA funding to the T. So we will, you know, we'll have to hire whoever does it. The company will be responsible for the operational end of the golf course, not the mitigation part.
Then we may have to, in terms of some of the items that are in here, because paragraph three says utilizing concessionaire with respect to the Exhibit A and Exhibit B obligations. Just want to make sure people are clear about that.
Council chair, I got one last question.
Go ahead.
It's, it's actually to the mayor, to the mayor. You know, because look, at the end of the day, this is the city that, you know, you represent and, and with respect to this, you know, this is something that you're handling on head-on, face-to-face, seeing the negotiation. Do you think that this is a good contract? Do you think that we'll be able to afford this?
But this is the best contract that we have right now. And, you know, we sat through numerous sessions, you know, negotiating, you know, since when, when the bid was accepted. And as mentioned before by several council members, the condition of the course, when we saw it initially, is not the condition when it was vacated. You know, there's, there's bathrooms, there's holes in the ceilings that we couldn't see because of the snow, obviously. You know, as, as mentioned, there's the erosions, there's, you know, there's, we, we went on the roof and there's, you know, somebody actually went on the roof and there, there's puncture marks in the roof for the banquet hall.
I, I agree, it's terrible.
Yeah, I mean, right now, this is, this is the best that we, you know, we had, you know, when, when it was presented. And, you know, as, as I mentioned, we're trying to make it a world-class golf course. You know, I also mentioned that Wayne County actually wants to also look at part of the, part of the golf course because of the flood mitigation, there's some, some of the residents in the area, you know, potential of them flooding. Well, it's, they're going to flood. If we get a bad storm right now, that area is going to flood till we get something or do something on the course. One, part of the course, because of the erosion that we're doing. So, you know, one of the things, I want to be clear, you know, if, if you guys vote no to this, we need, the administration needs direction from the council. Because right now, we, you know, this is, this is what I have.
I don't want to vote no for this. I, what I want to do.
No, I'm just, I'm just being, I'm, I'm being clear here. If you guys vote no, then I need direction from the council. What's the next step from the council?
Yeah, I, I don't want to vote no here, but what I want to do is, I want to be fiscally responsible. And to the, you know, I, I, I'm just being honest, the city don't have the money. That's something, I don't know if they're going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's going to get more expensive every day.
Yeah, and I, I understand, but I want you to know, if the city.
So, if, if the city is unable to perform their obligation, then our condition proceeding wouldn't be satisfied and we wouldn't come in, you know, as a management company, right? So if the city doesn't have the funds and the golf course doesn't open next year, you're back in the same situation that you're in now. But I think that under the current proposal, the city has, at least has an opportunity to get the golf course open next year. There are definitely areas where we need to figure out how, how it's going to be funded.
But I want you to know something, me personally, as the councilman of Dearborn Heights, that swore an oath, I'd rather have the protection of the residents than have a protection of the golf course.
Fair enough.
And I just want you to know, and I believe the mayor would want that and everybody here would want. This has nothing to do, all I can think about is David Saputo sitting in front of me and saying, you guys are overspending, you're over, this was before any of you guys were ever in this room. We sat in budget hearings and we were being literally told that if we didn't have ARPA money, we would have failed. And then we're going, we're on a pace for the next three years for potential bankruptcies.
Okay, but at the same time, something has got to be done with that golf course. This is very similar to, like, let's say hypothetically, a house that has a fire or is hit by lightning or whatever it is. There is work that needs to be done, nobody likes to spend it, I don't like to spend it, we may not even have it.
We don't.
Okay, I, I, and I get it. But something's got to be figured out because day by day by day, just driving by the golf course, you could see it, I, I, I go to wash my car on beach daily and, and I just turn every time, it's like, oh my God, it's getting worse and worse and worse. So time is of the essence, not in terms of the mayor saying, hey, time is of the essence, in terms of just pure, pure looking at it landscaping-wise, it's getting worse and worse and worse.
Absolutely terrible.
Okay, so therefore, the hard decisions got to be made, unfortunately. And we have to recognize that, as I said earlier, in a perfect world, we'd run a business for a profit, in a perfect world. But in the real world, government does not do a for-profit business. Government provides a service, sometimes at a cost that we eat, that maybe we don't like. But we have to do what we have to do, because if we don't, like Mr. Isa just mentioned, he's right. He's absolutely right. I could vote no on this, turn them down, we all turned them down, seven, zero, he's got nothing. We all turned it down and we have nobody else. And this thing is just getting worse and worse and worse. And then come September, October, we're too late. Now we got snow potential damage, et cetera, et cetera. It's just, it's, it's, it's unfortunately downhill. So right now, we're elected to make the tough decisions.
Council chair, timeout.
Yeah.
I just have to remind you something. If we make this vote today and we agree to either a high and a low of potentially one point seven, I'm not even going to say nine hundred thousand, I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to one point three. If we make an agreement today to one point three, can anybody tell me what's in our general ledger right now? How much money do we have in our reserves today?
The audit isn't done, but we should have about five million dollars.
Okay, five million dollars. If we spend one point five of that, are we going to be in a bad spot, Mariana?
Heck, yeah.
We're not going to be in a bad spot, you just told me that if we spent it, we would.
In the best spot, sorry, what is your question?
You, you just told me that if we were to spend the one point seven, that we would be in a very bad position.
Yes.
Okay. So right now, I have, I'm being put in a position to make a decision on one of two things. To potentially put the city at risk or put the golf course at risk. And with respect to this golf course, I can care less about this golf course.
Okay, but then there's another option.
Council chair?
We could vote against this.
No, how about I give a better option?
So let me show you something. Let's say we vote against this and we keep playing around with this thing. Eventually, it could be two, three, four, whatever it is, million dollars, to get it back to par so it can be golfed on again. So that's where time is of the essence.
I know.
Let's let Councilman Wenzel.
It's a dilemma, it's a real big dilemma.
Did you want to speak in regards to the title?
Council chair?
Also, just to mention on the budget, that is the budget through December twenty twenty-three, and that is the budget to get all the things up and going. The budget initially in August twenty-two is a hundred and twenty-two thousand, a hundred and nineteen dollars. Not that that is an insignificant amount of money, it really is, but.
Thank you. So the gentleman here, if you could introduce yourself and say which company you work for, can you give us a two, three minute, just very brief, what your assessment of the golf course, specifically the greens is?
Sure, my name's Daniel Taylor, thanks for letting me speak today. I work alongside these gentlemen for Revive Golf Management. Just a little bit of my own background, I've, I'm only thirty-one, I've worked in golf for seventeen years. Ten years of that primarily as a, a management-level greenskeeper. And I've been doing that pretty much ever since and do various consultations for golf courses in Jackson County currently as well. So the initial assessment of the golf course, as all of you guys have seen it, was pretty shocking, I would say. There's a lot of, there was a lot of neglect. But even beyond that, like when we went in there and we did some soil probes, there was signs of neglect, just regular maintenance that should have been done as well, that has impacted the current condition of the greens. In our estimation, and we, you know, not even considering the east side, the east side is even worse than the west, right? It's just far more impacted by flooding. There, there was probably two of the eighteen greens that we would deem recoverable, but not in.
On the east side or on the west?
On the west side.
Okay. Okay.
On the west side, and those were primarily in shaded areas that weren't burnt out, you know, water hasn't been run, it does look like the irrigation was cleared out appropriately in the fall, which was a good thing. The problem is that, you know, if we took time to go in there, punch holes, hammer them with sand and try to seed it, that's not a guarantee that all of those greens come back, they're gonna need fertility programs, et cetera. The best thing that we could do for those greens would be to lay sod, and we can't do that, you know, September first is really the last, last time that you could really do that because you need, you need warmer temperatures for germination. So that's really kinda the issue there, and we're talking close to three acres worth of sod, just for greens, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
I just have one last thing.
So, Councilman Wenzel was next, let him finish.
Well, I just want to wrap up. Come on, Musam, I want you to know, no, I just want you to know, and to the council here and, you know, who put, who's working on this, my issue is, what happens when the city can't hold up on the tour and, because at the end of the day, the mayor and this council has an obligation to the city, not to a golf course. And I don't want you to get there and say, well, the city hasn't done anything. Because at the end of the day, if ARPA doesn't come through, the city got no way to protect you. And so that's where my, that's where my fear comes in. But that's already where I stand.
Councilman Wenzel, and then we're gonna go ahead and take this to a vote.
With my conversation with these gentlemen, it was mentioned about the sod and their expertise is, they would probably say that would be the way to go because you're guaranteed growth. I mean, you can, I guess they could put all the effort into it seeding and come up empty-handed, so, and that's, that has to be done within, within a month, you know, so that, and I don't know how you, how you buy it, how soon you get it, so ideally, the best time is for sod is springtime, early, early spring, right? I mean, I know sod, but one thing that really burns me up is this talk about using ARPA money for flood mitigation, okay? The north end has gotten some floods in the last year or two, and now all constant, all efforts are put on mitigating these flood situations, and this would just be for houses around golf course area, not the whole, not the whole north end. And this is on a golf course that's been established. And on the south end, we have thirty-four acres of city property that's been sitting there, vacant for fifty years, and this money should be going toward, any ARPA money should be going toward a flood mitigation retention basin on an incinerator area, something that's been needed for fifty years, not the last few years. And people say, oh, we're gonna use ARPA money for flood mitigation for the north end, those houses around the golf course, that burns me up because we've been suffering on the south end with flooding for fifty years, not two, three years, not five years, not ten years, fifty years, same thing, we're buying houses up to tear them down because of the flood. And to spend money, ARPA money, if it's possible, on the golf course, taking up holes on the golf course for flood mitigation, that's ridiculous, that's an insult, a slap in the face to every resident in the south end.
Okay.
Council chair.
Councilman, if you could do me a favor, because one of the things that we gotta all stop, all of us, we're the city of Dearborn Heights, this is not two cities.
Yes, thank you.
Well, you know what, that's- Council chair, council chair, have you invested anything in Dearborn City, Dearborn Heights?
I've invested all over Dearborn Heights.
How much in the south end have you invested in?
I don't need to disclose my finances right now.
No, I'm saying, it's not, it's not one city.
Sir.
It's two separate cities, it's two separate-
It is not two separate cities, it is one city.
Two separate locations, there's a difference.
But do me a favor, we gotta, all of us, I'm talking about the city itself.
You keep saying that, but it's not true.
Okay, you're entitled to your opinion, but this is the stuff that causes that type of divide, like it's the north versus the south. It is not, it is not, number one. Number two, number two, if you talk about fifty years, I get it, fifty years, absolutely, but it's not, this administration has been doing this for fifty years, so let's make that clear. Mayor, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Debo is gonna talk about some of the stuff, you know, I, you know, I just don't like when anybody, especially a councilman that leads, misleads or misinforms the residents. So if you give a chance to Mr. Debo after, he was gonna make a comment on some of the stuff that we've been doing, especially with the equals creek, no, the equals creek.
Well, absolutely.
Because I don't like when somebody misleads the residents, saying we're not doing something about another area of Dearborn Heights, that's misleading.
I didn't say you weren't doing anything, did I? Why are you putting words in my mouth, Mr. Mayor? I didn't say you weren't doing anything.
Point of order, point of order.
All right, that's misleading, that's misleading right there, putting words in my mouth.
Councilman, please, anything else, anything else on the golf course? Councilwoman Brier, said you had a comment to make?
I'm just wondering if there's anything that could be diverted from the three point four million to aid the golf course portion. Any portion at all would be helpful. And secondly, on the liquor, the ten percent, I'd rather see it from the gross than the net, if that would be at all possible, because you can't always prove a net. I'd rather have it come from the gross.
Okay. And this is stuff that they do with the negotiates, but thank you, yes, councilman.
Thank you, council chair, and I voted for the Isa brothers for the concession contract. I very much want to see the golf course open, but this contract is very, very important, the obligation of the parties involved, and just look back at the operation of the golf course under Oneida. There were, I don't think there was any written agreement, a lot of times I would call for reserve the hall or different things about events, no one would answer. So I, I believe that the Isa brothers have a great reputation, maybe we could vote yes on the contract or for the contract, subject to the language of the money being put in, being firmer instead of may, you know, more of shall, and it doesn't have to be the three point four million, it could be an amount less than that.
Okay.
Subject to that.
Okay, so at this point, I apologize.
Council chair.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, we move this to a study session. I mean, there's too many things all council members are concerned with, and to just say, agree upon it and contingents of different things.
Okay.
I mean, this is a big contract and-
Sure.
I'm sure, I mean, you had time to go over it, and I just got back into town, I'm sure Councilman Badun hasn't had the time to go over it, he just got back into town, I've talked to another council member that says they haven't had the time to go over it.
The contract was emailed a week ago.
But with due respect, it was sent a while back.
Then you were the review of the contract.
Right, go ahead, Gary.
Council chair, I would, frankly, I think it would be preferable to end up having a yes or no vote and then direction if it's gonna be a no vote, so that we know what we're supposed to deal with, as opposed to going to a study session, because a study session still puts us into a position where we don't have any sort of definitive direction.
Right.
If you say yes, then we're, we're set. If you say no, then we have a definitive direction, and then after that, as a follow-up on the discussion, you could end up saying, look, these are some things we want, Mr. Isa's here, and then we can end up potentially following up on, on further stuff. Or you could sit there and say, no, we don't want to go in this direction, or Mr. Isa could tell us, look, I'm sick of dealing with you people. I mean, various things that we could end up seeing in this, in this situation, but frankly, you making a decision as opposed to shuffling it off to a study session will be more helpful than it goes off to a study session a week from now and we're still talking around in circles.
My concern, Corporation Council, with going to a study session, next Tuesday's elections, so we can't do a study session next Tuesday, and I believe that Tuesday after that, if I'm not mistaken, is a regular council meeting, if I'm not mistaken, correct? So then we can't do it on that date, so then we're bumped to another date, another two weeks, so we're talking about six, potentially, possibly, six weeks from now. Six weeks from now, we do a study session, we argue back and forth, everybody gives their opinion, good or bad or ugly, and then let's just say hypothetically, we come to an agreement, all of us amongst, amongst all of us, we're not gonna be able to vote on it at a study session, obviously, so now we're bumped to the week after that. So what we are talking about here is, if we take this thing to a study session, we're potentially looking at a sixty-day period before we could wait, before we could vote on it. And at that point, let's use a hypothetical, that we say, okay, we agree, we approve, we're happy with everything, then we come back to this gentleman, or these three gentlemen right here, and we say, okay, guys, it's September fifteenth, let's do this! And he says, well, it's too late. And not at one point seven that I told you would take to revive this place, is that whatever that number would happen to be, that's where I'm concerned about a study session. I think we've discussed it enough, in my opinion, I think it's time to take this thing to a vote, I'd like to see some changes, but we'll go from there, guys.
And I'm just gonna add just one thing to what you said, one point seven led- The one point seven led to now two point six? Where do we get the first one point seven? That's my only thought, I want to say yes. No, no, no. We stop, I want you to know something, you can't make a decision if we don't have it.
Okay, guys, guys, okay. Wait, Seiza, if you want to speak, come on up here, if you want to speak, come on up here.
That's like, I know, we saw my-
Not, not, not from the audience, please, come over here real quick.
Come here real quick for me. I have a good relationship with the Isa brothers, I have very good friends, just actually-
But this is not about, then personally, it's, it's, they are the potential source-
And I'm extremely hyper as well.
Because I'm just tired, man, we've been going through this back and forth, it's costing us a lot of money, it's costing the city a lot of money.
I just want you to know, my only concern is-
Whatever decision you make, I respect it. I mean, I don't know the city's finances, I don't know where they have their money, I don't know nothing about that, but whether you approve this contract or not, this money's gotta be paid to get this golf course fixed for the residents, like you guys been trying to say, right? So like, like Mr. Abdullah said, it's one point seven today, but we're saying it's one point seven, it could be eight hundred grand, nobody knows, till they get in there and they start working. I mean, it's gonna be in phases, to get this golf course right, yes, it will cost you one point seven, but it's gonna take phases to do it, so it's not like you gotta come up with one point seven tomorrow.
I understand it, but we don't even have the small, I'm just telling you, because you were, you were a part of these meetings.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, no, I respect it, but I'm saying whether we, right now, you guys got a great team here that can help this grow and be profitable and start, you know, fixing it and getting going. If we walk away, I don't know what's gonna happen with you guys, I'll be honest with you. If you don't have the money, it's gonna double and triple, then I might think you might have to sell this property, I'll be honest with you.
And here's how we do it, just like every family does it, when there's a problem and a big expense they didn't anticipate, they figure things out, they cut something here, they add something there, they borrow from their uncle, they borrow from the bank, we'll figure something out, something's gotta be figured out, because while we're waiting, the golf course is just getting worse and worse and worse.
And believe, one more thing, I gotta give credit to Rob here that's been cutting the grass in front of the building-
Oh, that's where I've seen you before.
In front of the clubhouse-
Yeah.
On Warren Avenue for the last three months.
Yeah, so I acted like a security guard driving on Warren Avenue, remember that? And I seen a guy cutting the grass, and I said-
And he ain't getting paid for it.
No, and he wasn't an out, I just happened to drive by on Warren Avenue, and I seen a guy cutting the grass, I'm like, what the heck is this guy doing? So I pulled up to him, said, excuse me, said, who are you? He gives me his name, like, okay, but why are you cutting the grass? He went out, okay, that's where I remember you from, I'm trying to remember where I've seen you before.
That Shirley, she used to work for me at the Royalty Manor Bank as well.
Oh, okay.
She worked at the Warren Valley, she worked there.
Council chair, while Mr. Isa's up there.
Mr. Isa.
Yeah. Councilwoman Brier made a suggestion or asked you a question, if you'd be willing to invest part of that three point four into the golf course instead of just the banquet facility?
I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm anticipating it's gonna probably cost me more than three point four million to, to do what I wanna do there, but I don't wanna get into numbers, but if we really wanna expand and do things, it's gonna cost more than three point four million, so I don't think I got the budget to throw it at the golf course. That's why I got these guys here, to, to invest into the golf course with the city, because that's what they're gonna be benefiting out of, is the golf course.
I like, I mean, I've talked to them, I like it, but it's just-
They're good people, they know what they're doing, I think they'll be very successful there, and they're doing the city a favor by, by being in there, because I've been interviewing, I've searched companies, I've met multiple, with multiple companies, these guys are the best, I got you guys the right people here, and it's you guys, it's up to you guys to make a decision.
Okay.
So let's go ahead and take this- I mean, it's, it's, it's a, whoever gets the golf course will be handed a ready-to-go, golf-ready business, it's like, and you could get a hundred people to bid on that.
Okay.
No?
Okay, this is the last thing that we're gonna, that we gotta make a decision.
If you look at the budget that you have there, that's only the restoration of the east side. We've committed to doing both, both, we have to work with the county, we have to work with the mayor's office, but we're also taking on the west side, that's at our expense. So the full budget, and we have them for the east and the west side, is over two and a half million dollars. We're only looking for the city's contribution on the east side. The west side is our financial burden, something that we're taking on, and that's part of the deal as we proposed it.
Part of the deal between you and Mr. Isa, right?
Well, part, the deal that we've signed, your contribution is only for the east side, it says right on the appendix if you look there, that's for eighteen. Our team will be taking care of the west side.
What do you get out of it?
Well, over the life of the contract, we hope that we're able to turn a profit on it, but honestly, we've owned golf courses before, in a good year, we make a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? That's not why we do this. I mean, it's not, we're never gonna make a lot of money, and there are gonna be a lot of years where we lose a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You get into this, it's a passion project, we've made money, we've done well in other businesses, and, you know, the opportunity to renovate and flip it down Ross Course is something that, that we wanted to.
Thank you. Councilman Wenzel, out of respect, I'm gonna give you one last comment, then we're done.
Okay, um, this is a recreational facility, and it's just like any of other parks in Dearborn Heights, they don't make a profit, it's there for the residents and neighboring communities to enjoy and have this as an asset to your city, something like that. And I just want the council members to ask themselves this question, you know, whose best interest is this contract in? Is it the best interest of the residents of Dearborn Heights, or is it the best interest of the possible operator?
Okay, council chair.
Yes, go ahead, Corporation.
You know, respectfully, I'm not sure that I see how it was that you have the obligation under the agreement for something other than to just keep it there, and, but to basically make everything playable and ready for the entire golf course. Exhibit B just, just refers to-
The city's contribution to get the east side open, so the contract doesn't speak to the west side at all.
I know, but that's, that's the point.
Right.
For, for the contract to speak to the west side and to be contractually binding on you, for it not to be a volunteer effort, we, we would need to have that addressed.
We would happily do that, right? I mean, our issue is, we've been trying to keep it a thirty-six hole course, and the city wants-
No, no, I appreciate, I appreciate the effort, and I'm sure other people here, the elected officials do. The issue though, for me, is that I wanna make sure that they're clear that that's not a contractual commitment, just like the three point four, so, thank you, but I needed to clarify that.
So we're gonna go ahead and, and put this thing to a vote unless somebody has any urgent questions. No more urgent questions, we're gonna go ahead and put it to a vote. I speak for myself, Corporation Council, we'd need, I would need personally the changes, otherwise I would not be comfortable with approving this, without the changes on the capping the CFO, I'm gonna give you just a briefing, capping the CFO, all the stuff, I got my questions answered. And number four, which was, the twenty-year term, keeping the same rent, I'd like to have that reassessed after twenty years. And then number seven, whether we're gonna, I mean, you guys want, not want, but I mean, we gotta talk about banquet revenue, because we're getting done, I'm making it clear to you guys.
Yeah.
And then verification of the funds. So the verification of the funds should be easy, making the three point four million mandatory should be easy. And important, of course, so the only issues is, we're providing certificate of occupancy open-ended, which could possibly include the parking lot, obviously. And then the rent being five thousand dollars after twenty years.
Council chair?
Yes.
In your own words, you even said that the city is not in to be making money.
I got it.
To do, to do services for the city. So to put demands on what we get from the concession stand, the concession part, the banquet facility, should be stricken completely because that's what the people go into business for, and, and then you're gonna give that away, I don't think is feasible, number one. Number two, the city, the city is not in business to make any money, you're correct, and only to do a service. The golf course will be a service to the city in multiple ways, as far as flood mitigation, keeping it a green space, cuz God knows where that water would go if the property had been sold years ago. And we would still have, I think, a Class A golf course that we can go and golf at. It's, you know, and you're gonna generate some revenue on the golf side, I don't think it's gonna, no matter if you have a, unless you have an Oakland Hills Country Club, you're not gonna generate any money. I mean, you want the golf courses to be self-sustaining, maintenance-wise, and sustain itself, just like they do at Glen Hurst Golf Course in Redford, the ones in Livonia, the ones in Dearborn, they're self-sustaining now. So they get the money coming in from the golf, they put money to maintain it, they pay their employees, and it's almost a break-even type deal. And maybe there's a few pennies left over for somebody to put in their pocket. That's the golfing, bowling business in our state.
So.
Council Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Or vote to approve the contract, subject to those changes.
There's more changes.
Here's the problem, we're gonna have to go back and negotiate if he's still interested, if the parties are still interested in negotiating after this meeting. Just recognize that. But the point is, is that, subject to these changes, this is all negotiable anyways. They may wanna say, look, hey, if there's gonna be a commitment, it's gonna be 2 million instead of 3.4, because we're taking on certain other business risk. And so these things are gonna potentially, I would rather basically have a sense of what you're, like you were doing, Council Chair, what you think are important things, but recognize that if I have to deal with negotiating this, I'm gonna have to deal with Mr. Shank, and Mr. Shank is gonna basically, he's looking out for what's best for Isa Brothers. So, there's gonna be give and take to come back, but if I have a sense of what your items are, say, look, I think this is the best agreement that we could get, then that's what we aim for.
It sounds like the suggestion of putting 3.4 million exact amount or more, we're all in agreement on that, is that correct, council members?
Yes, I am.
So we're in agreement on that. Proving that he has access to the 3.4 million, I presume we'd all want something like that, I would want something like that, and I presume we could look for something like that, so you guys okay with that?
Council Chair, there's too many other things that I haven't even mentioned, you know, that we need to talk about. I'm just looking through this contract right now, I mean, the 10 uses per year, do we have to pay for those? It's not in there.
Those are for free.
It's not in there. It's to whose discretion, I mean, there's so many, too many things in there, that, you know, to approve this contract, this should be the Warren Valley Golf Course contract, this would be-
Councilman, you always complain that we take too long, you always complain that we do nothing. But then, I know, but then once we're gonna do something, they say, no, let's hold off on this thing. I got a bunch of stuff, and then you yourself mentioned, with due respect-
Tell me one last time, one last time. I mean, I've got, I mean, I'm just looking at this contract, every time I read, I find something I don't like.
But you yourself said you hadn't read it.
I said, as I'm reading it right now, I'm going through it. Every time I read it, I find something I don't like, every time I look at something. Write a refusal, I mean, why is there even a mention of selling the golf course? I thought that was no, no, no talk about that, now it's right in the contract.
Let's make sure that they are protected if that was to end up happening. And again, we do not have a charter amendment or charter provision that says it can't happen. It could end up happening, then they're dealing with someone other than us.
And that's normal under all, that's normal under all contracts, Councilman, because if somebody comes in and invests 3.4 million into a property, and then we call them up, hey, Mr. Isa, next week, hey, we sold the property, see you later, that's not gonna fly, obviously. So any businessman would wanna, in their contract, rightfully so for him, write a first refusal. So if you hypothetically negotiate, sell it, he would have the first opportunity to be able to buy it, that's common.
I've had a resolution on the table for, officially for six months, but more than for years. And it's a three-page resolution, and it's taken years to get on the city council. And it's already been written, everybody's seen it, but no one wants to put it on. But here, we have a 50-page contract that we bam, get it right on like that.
Okay, so I will disagree with you, sir, because what you have, and I'd have to get it from here, I can't go through all my papers, but what you have is something that asks the Corporation Council to do, and it's one of the reasons why we're asking for a full-time Corporation Council. I spoke with Gary, and he had me prioritize which ones were important, and I explained to him that the charter was one of the important items. He did prepare, he got it to us after, obviously, the deadline for the council meeting. Okay, let me finish. And then now, we have it, we will be setting either a study session or putting it up to a vote, so your comments with due respect are false.
What's, was it on the agenda? Did I miss something?
Because it was past the agenda.
Because it's been a year? That's what I'm saying, it's been a year.
B, we are voting on a contract, we didn't wanna convolute it with all additional items.
Council Chair, we have a motion on the table, let's go.
But see, it's the Councilman that keeps bringing up additional items.
We're ready to vote, and then you started letting everyone else talk.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go ahead and take this thing to a vote. And just for clarification, Corporation Council, this is with no changes?
No, it would not change.
That is correct, your vote will be yes or no on this, and if you say no, then the comments that have ended up being made will end up being taken into account. Mr. Isa is here, if he's still interested in pursuing it, and if necessary, people can reach out to me and call and say, hey, this is important to me, and then I can take that to the administration, or you can call the mayor, and he can convey that. And Council Chair, you've already laid out, you know, A, B, C, D, and it seems that there's a consensus with regard to those, so if there are little other tweaks, certainly we can end up revisiting.
So I believe, based on my limited knowledge in contracts, we could approve this, subject to the approval of the purchasers or the Isa Brothers on the two or three conditions that we've made. And if they approve them, once you speak with Mr. Shank, then we'd be good to go. If they deny them, then it has to come back to council.
Well, then it would be a matter of, you just, I mean, you could do it, but you would basically say, subject to Corporation Council being fine with the changes that are-
Had been suggested.
But we won't still be able to work on a course until we get it done.
Correct.
Right. I mean, in my mind, it just makes more sense to bring it back to you in a final form and just, as opposed to approving it subject to these things, which I'm gonna have to negotiate anyway.
Well, the items on there, I mean, just, not to negotiate, but these are, no, I got it, but I'm saying, no, I understand, but the items that we are thinking, at least I'm thinking, are important, putting on a 3.4 million, putting it as an exact amount, that's an easy, I mean, you said 3.4 million yourself in your proposal, so I'm sure you'll honor that, but the English slash legalese in there is not correct. So that's a simple thing. Number two, knowing you, you would never say, I'm gonna go ahead and pay 3.4 million if you didn't know you had it. But on our end, we gotta do our due diligence and have you prove it to us, that's a simple term. The certificate of occupancy, to me, I would want either to know what is gonna be brought up to code by us as a city, or capping it, one or the other. Either capping it at a reasonable amount, or what is the amount, I mean, one of those two, and then that's it. And then we said we'd want the banquet procedures, correct?
I don't care.
Are you guys all in agreement, we want the banquet procedures?
Right.
Then that's it.
I don't think the banquet procedures should be included.
Okay, but then that's it, that's fine, then that's it.
We're not into making it money.
Then that's it. If you guys are comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with making a decision tonight on this contract, subject to these changes being approved by the-
Council Chair just recommended we don't do that, I mean, the Council, Corporation Council.
In contracts, yes, you can.
No, Corporation Council recommended that we not vote on this contract with conditions.
I just feel a little uncomfortable when I'm making a decision for the entire city based on language that's gonna be really important. If you wanna do that, I've done it in the past, I'm fine, but if you want this to be brought back, it could be potentially brought back for a special meeting.
So I could do a special meeting, because it's only two, three items, we could do a Zoom meeting if they, one second, if the Isa Brothers agreed to this, we've agreed to this, we do a council meeting, a special council meeting and approve it on a Zoom meeting. Well, we can't do it via Zoom, we gotta do it in person, correct? We'll do a special meeting and approve just those four conditions.
Why only four conditions?
Well, we bring back the entire agreement, I mean-
We've already discussed, these are things that are-
Important to you, your four conditions.
What's your issue?
I told you I had issues, I'm just reading it right now.
But that's, okay, but that's a more-
I mean, I'd like to-
That's the point, we were given this contract two months ago.
If it was up to me, I'd have the 3.4 in an escrow account. I mean, that's-
So when you put 3.4 million in the escrow account, you're not giving the person access to it to be able to do whatever he needs to do? I don't wanna convolute the two, okay.
Voting no would not kill this thing, voting no would be, get it the way we want it, tweak it, and then come for us again. I'm not against this, no one wants this golf course opened up more than, please, point of order, please. No one wants this golf course opened up more than me, it's a fact, I mean-
I know.
Not one person up here has been an advocate of this golf course more than me.
You yourself are saying you haven't looked it over, so one of the other options, we could wait until you have a chance to look it over, if that's what you want. But it'll just keep delaying things, and eventually the golf course will be worse and worse and worse.
These guys are just saying, the best way to do it is SAD, and SAD can be done next spring, I mean, this is not-
No, it won't take long.
Okay, okay, guys, nobody from the audience, please, okay, let's go ahead and take this to a vote.
So what I'm looking at are the following things, capping the CFO expense or figuring out what they are, escalator after 20 years, verification of 3.4 million, 3.4 million is mandatory, and I would add page numbers, because somehow or other they ended up being off as well, somehow between when this was all being done. Those are the five things that I'm looking at, is that-
Council Chair, I just have one quick question. I'm just going back, the city, it has nothing to do with what the Isa Brothers, I'm just bringing up city. We are in charge of the CFO, we are in charge of making sure the CFO's gonna cover-
The parking lot.
Parking lot.
Correct.
The bathrooms, the water, the this, the that, the trail, plus the 1.7.
Correct.
I just wanna make that very clear.
And that's why I'm saying I'd like to cap the CFO, or view what is needed, so we can have a dollar figure. And that happens.
Let's rewrite this contract and vote on it the right way, instead of-
I mean, you can't go back and rewrite this contract, the contract's right in front of us here.
No, it can be, it's been rewritten a couple times already.
We've been sitting in front of this, this is-
So let's go ahead and take it to the vote, we'll go ahead, you're allowed to vote, no, Mr. Councilman, Wenzel. Okay, so let's go ahead and take it to a vote based on the conditions that we just gave the Corporation Council.
Right, and you should probably end up having something official that says that.
That you're amending the motion, right?
Namely, that the motion be amended to add those conditions in my-
Subject to approval of the council on those conditions and concessionaire.
Well, I'll bring the full agreement back.
Corporation Council Chair, what happens if we think of something tonight, and we go home, we want something on there that's not in there? Is it too late?
It will be too late.
Yeah, well, see, that's not right, that's not right.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and take this thing to a vote based on the way it was presented, so who made the motion initially?
But did we amend the motion?
Okay, we're amending the motion, correct. Okay, point of order, please.
Let's make sure we are clear about this.
Council Chair, so motion on AC, or AF, I'm sorry, is it AF?
I think Mo made the motion.
Motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman Breyer, you gotta amend your motion.
I amend my motion too, as Corporation Council.
Is that sufficient, Madam Plaid? No?
I don't think so, I mean, we have no idea what-
Yeah, we have.
I think it should be spelled out, what Corporation Council is looking at.
What are we rushing this through?
It's a contract.
We're not rushing it through, you yourself said you've been waiting to march from this. I'm confused, honestly, Councilman.
That was to get the golf course open this year.
Let me ask you this.
I want this golf course open, I want it open next spring, but it doesn't matter if it's this week or next week or two weeks.
Yeah, it does, it makes a difference.
No, it doesn't.
All right, and when we do, you're entitled to a vote.
This contract, it should be-
Can you make sure you and the clerk are on the same page?
Yeah, I think it needs to be spelled out, so it would be a motion by whoever, seconded by whoever, to approve the contract and authorize the signatures of the mayor and the city clerk. Subject to additional changes to the contract as approved by Corporation Council, capping the expense-
Certificate of occupancy repairs.
Containing an escalator after a 20-year period, verifying that $3.4 million is available for Isa Brothers to make the changes, including the $3.4 million investment being mandatory, and the addition of page numbers to the agreement.
This cannot be approved.
That's not gonna go.
So motion with the amendment for Corporation Council, made by Councilman Bedun, and seconded by Councilman Breyer, yes.
But that's what you want.
No, no, if there's something you guys want, go ahead, I ask all you guys.
But I'm in favor of either going forward with the contract with only one thing, of the changing the language where it says about the 3.4 million, and that's it. I mean, we're asking to rewrite almost the whole contract here, we're not though. Then we're going back to renegotiating, correct?
If, it could be very easy to end up renegotiating this, depending on what Mr. Isa says, and Mr. Shank would have to look at the language and also feel comfortable and advise Mr. Isa.
I don't think he's comfortable with it right now.
See, he's not gonna renegotiate, there you go, there you go, he's not gonna renegotiate.
I gotta vote, it's either yes or no, please, do me a favor, just end it here, yes or no, I'm not, no hard feelings, please. I'm not gonna bullshit with nobody, I'm not, I spent no more money, I do this.
Okay, point of order, please.
Okay, so let's, I don't know what you wanna do then.
Well, since Mr. Isa has indicated that he's not gonna accept those changes, you should just go back to the original motion, which is to approve the contract as submitted, and to approve signatures by the mayor and the city clerk, and that should be what your vote should be on, given what Mr. Isa has said, because Mr. Isa has indicated that he's not going to do anything more, and that's his prerogative.
All right, so motion without the amendment as made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman, yeah, I'll take a roll call, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer, again, without the amendment, so there's gonna be no changes, it's the contract as written, I wanna make it clear, it's the contract as written. So, Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Dave Abdullah?
No.
Mo Bedun?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
No.
Ray Muscat?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Two, two, one, two, three, four, motion fails.
Now we gotta take it out to bid, send it back to Council.
No, they think they want Eric from Innes Valley to come and screw it up some more.
Next item on the agenda is item, that would be eight.
Council Chair?
Yes.
If I may, this has been a very heated and discussed item, and we need to do something and make a motion that we refer this back to the administration for a rebid then.
There's, obviously, there's no contract changes.
If there's no contract changes, he doesn't want it, so he has to go back for a rebid.
Yep, and that's gonna be another six months, probably, six months to-
I understand it, but I'm gonna have to suspend the rules.
Let's wait, let's wait till the end.
It's an incidental motion, he could end up making a motion as a follow-up, that's-
It's a follow-up to what we just did, so I make a motion to send this back to the administration to go back out for bid, because we need the golf course open. I mean, everybody voted no on this, not everybody, but the majority voted no. So now, the people that want this golf course open, which is all of us, we better do something, and I think we better send it back to the administration for a rebid.
Council Chair?
Councilman, go ahead.
You know, I've done a lot of negotiations, so has the Council Chair, so has everybody here, we're this close, okay? Let's not, everybody cut off their nose to spite their face, that's, if we go out for bids, and you're talking another year at least, where the Isa Brothers have done a lot of work, we're that close, you know, you say, you never say never, why make a bad situation worse? Why make, you know, we're gonna go for rebids?
So we wanna go back and tell our Corporation Council to give Madchenka a call and see what he can do?
No, the motion was-
It could be brought back to the table.
It can be brought back to the table.
But if the guy doesn't want to, what are you gonna do?
Recommendation, recommendation is that you do something along the lines of Councilman Muscat's motion. If I receive a call from Mr. Shank, or the mayor has some discussions with Mr. Isa, then we can potentially come back with that as quickly as we can do.
Correct.
Meanwhile, we're moving in a direction.
Well, I think too early to say, let's put it up for bid, let's give an opportunity to people.
But the Council, Corporation Council said to go ahead and do that, we'll have at least a hand in the basket here.
We still have to end up coming back to this honorable body, so we're at least starting to work on.
I make a motion that City Council move this back to the administration to go out for rebid.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Wenzel, any discussion on that? Council Chair, Councilman Bedun?
Mr. Muscat, I appreciate that, and I understand where you're coming in from on this.
Thank you, sir.
I think I'm gonna have to agree with Mr. Coniston, our Councilman Coniston on this, we are very close.
There's no doubt, but I just wanna have something backing us up.
Okay, I respond, just a backup.
Council Chair, I also, if we go out for bid, rebid, I wanna make myself clear here, I'm gonna put something in the contract or the rebid, that the previous concessionaire is not to be around that golf course, and I'll put something in there as well, that we need to know who's gonna be running the golf course, it's gotta be in writing. Because based on everything that's been happening for the last few months, everybody wants the previous concessionaire over here, so- Because based on everything that's been happening for the last few months, everybody wants the previous concessionaire over here, so.
Previous concessionaire is running it.
Well, that's, I'm just making myself clear. It's gonna be in the contract because I'm not gonna go back to square negative, whatever.
I would support that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So I, yes.
I agree.
He smacks away.
Well, you made your golf outing. I boycotted the entity altogether, but you made your freaking golf outing over there. So I guess you said you were Mr. Dearborn Heights.
We've got a motion on the table.
And it's seconded. By Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Wenzel.
Council Chair, he just made us, he just salted me.
Let's, okay, let's move on.
He's the mayor. Okay, it's cool. You're the mayor. You can do that.
So, motion by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Wenzel. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
All right, Madam Clerk, we're keeping you busy today.
Yes, you are. Dave Abdallah?
Yes.
Sorry, I have to handwrite this off. Moby Bedun?
No.
Nancy Brier?
No.
Robert Coniston?
No.
Ray Muscat?
Yes.
And Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
And we have a tie, and it's not a majority of a vote.
Okay, so at this point, I would ask if anybody is willing to change their vote.
Yes.
Okay, so let's say, so being that it's yes, let's take another roll call, please. Is that a corporation?
I just want to make sure that this doesn't potentially harm the way that we're tomorrow morning, we get a phone call from Matt Shank, and he says, I'm gonna make the adjustments that Council Chair said.
That's what I'm talking about.
And that would be good, but we have a hand in the basket that we're, in case it doesn't happen, we can start the process immediately without having to come back in two weeks to do this all over again.
Okay, so the way this technically be done is on a motion for reconsideration by Councilman Bedun, because he was on the actual side. If he's changing his vote, if one of them's changing their vote, whoever's changing their vote was on the prevailing side, which would be on the side that basically voted no, would end up having to make a motion for reconsideration. Someone else, anyone else can second that motion.
Let's make the motion.
Make the motion for reconsideration.
Let's see what she has to say.
I'm sorry, but it's my understanding that we do not need approval from the council to go out for bids.
Yeah.
Is that true?
Yes, that's true, but ultimately, we want to, if, you know, we could do it, but it's just a matter of basically.
I think it's good for the record. I think it's good for the record. I mean, she just said, you don't need to, I mean, you don't need to make.
Okay.
But do you want to make your wishes known?
No, I don't want to, I don't want to change my vote. It's had a tie-in if, in the administration, I mean, can go out and go for it.
That's fine. It's no, that's cool.
Next item on agenda, item 8G, budget amendments.
No, 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 we already did that one.
Okay, so now we're into 9A. Treasurer Hicks Clayton Quarterly Investment Funds for June 30th, 2022.
9A, excuse me? Is that what, okay. I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council received note and file on a quarterly investment of funds reported on June 30th, 2022, as outlined in 9A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on agenda is Treasurer Hicks Clayton, City of Dearborn Heights Depositories Update in Bank Documents.
Council Chair?
Uh, Councilman Muscat.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized Mayor Bill Bazey, Comptroller Cynthia King, and City Clerk Lynn Zup Siena, and the Treasurer Lisa Hicks to sign all necessary documents with the City of Dearborn Heights Financial Institution to act as a depositories of Funds as JP Morgan, Chase Bank, Comerica Park, Dearborn Federal Savings Bank, Flagstar Bank, and Morgan Stanley Investment. The request is being made per resolution as outlined in 9B.
Support. Hey, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that? I had a quick question and disagreement, I should say, and I'll take this to our City Treasurer, Lisa Hicks Clayton. And this is, whenever I speak, I always speak in terms of the position, not in terms of the person. So everybody knows I love our Clerk Lynn Senior, but I don't see why in this particular case we need the clerk's signature on items that are being invested, Comerica Bank, Dearborn Federal Savings Bank, any type of documentation that's financial. I just see the clerk's office as a separate entity that should not be involved with approving checks, deposits, et cetera, et cetera. To me, that's something that should be handled by the comptroller, the treasurer, and administration, not the clerk's office, who in my opinion should not have their hands on this. This is not, this sounds like a trust thing. I just don't feel that they should be the ones that should be obligated to approve financial investments in the city.
Did you want me to answer that, Council Chair?
Please.
The reasoning behind it?
You got cut off.
I believe it's.
I hear they're gonna end out to the meeting. Hopefully, you can hear me and I can explain to you why we write this way.
Yes.
And the reason we write this way is because of the Charter, Section 8.9, and what actually allows for. It's really verbatim from that charter item. But we only go, or sure only goes, it's either or, right? The comptroller or the clerk, right? It doesn't have to be both of us. It's one or the other. You really want to have both of them on there because if one's not available, you don't want to hold up your production of getting work done or holding up things to get out. So the city clerk, in my opinion, you know, we had her because we had interim comptroller that didn't want to be a signer, from my understanding. And so now we can add comptroller Cynthia King, and then our Madam Clerk would be the backup to the comptroller, and for some reason, the comptroller was not available.
How many signatures?
Again, that is taken as based on the charter.
How many signatures do you need?
I need three.
Okay, so with three, you have Mayor Bazey.
Once the council approves this, and I can go to the bank and change everything, the comptroller will be able to sign checks, and I won't have to ask the clerk to do that.
Right, but in my opinion, it should be people that are involved with the finances of the city, not the clerk. Go ahead. One second.
Look, there have been communications between the clerk's office, the city clerk, and the treasurer with respect to this item. I understand the city clerk's position. She doesn't want to end up being involved, you know.
Oh, I'm not speaking.
But the fact is, is that the charter, the charter does reference her position, and it references and/or the clerk. So, yeah, me and and/or the comptroller. So, I mean, technically speaking, technically speaking, the treasurer's position, even though it should not probably be included in that, it is referred to in the charter, and it probably makes sense.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion on that? All right?
I think Director Jamal has something to add, though, probably based on his previous experience as a compliance director.
Okay, Director Jamal, we gotta keep it short. Go ahead.
Thankfully, I will keep it as short as possible. Actually, the charter doesn't refer to the need of bank agreement. It's a policy matter. So, the either or, the clerk or the comptroller, they are meant to be able to sign the wall.
You got cut off.
For the council to decide who is the one who signed for the bank. Now, it is recommended to mimic the charter. I agree, and we discussed that previously when I was wearing the different hat, you know, as a director for compliance. But if the council choose not to, not to obligating the banks to accept three signatures, the bank can accept only the mayor and the treasurer, or the comptroller and the treasurer, or the treasurer by itself. Why that? Because the warrant is the important portion of the 8.9 that there is a record of three signatures to issue the check. Issuing the check itself, it's a matter of a procedure, policy. It's not a matter of objectivity.
Okay, thank you, Director. All right, so we'll go ahead and take this thing to a vote. All in favor? I'm sorry, let me repeat who the motion was made by. Uh, here we go. The motion, okay, 9A, here we go. No, we're on 9B, correct?
Yes.
9B. So who made the motion on 9B?
Ray.
Okay, Councilwoman Brier, who seconded it?
Oh, no, I made the motion. I made the.
Muscat and then Brier?
Yes.
Okay, so item nine, okay, so item 9B, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Bedun. Councilman Bedun.
It's enough. This is getting out of line.
Leslie made me do this. All right, any other discussion on this? All right, let's go ahead and take this to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Aye. No? Those opposed? No? Madam Clerk, motion carried. You want to take a roll call?
Sure.
I was only no, so I guess.
You were the only no?
We're good, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so motion carried. Next item on agenda is item 9C.
Council Chair?
Yes, Councilman. Treasurer Hicks Clayton Fund Transfer.
Councilman, the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the transfer of 2.2 million from the American Rescue Plan account to the general fund pool account. In addition, authorized the mayor and the comptroller or clerk to sign the authorization and the treasurer to transfer the funds as outlined in 9C.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on agenda is item 9D, Parks and Recreation Director Lauren Sell proposed Central Park Marquee Intergovernmental Agreement. Anybody now?
On what now? On nine?
9D.
D.
9D. Park and Recreation?
Yep.
I'm just gonna, hey, just to open it up. Uh, Council Chair?
Go ahead.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council extended $44,624 in allocations from the Wayne County Park Village for the purchase and installation of a new electronic marquee sign to be located at Central Park. In addition, approved the intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County and authorized the mayor and a clerk to sign three copies of the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in 9D.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that? Hearing none.
Council Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Can I just get a quick update on this from our Director Lauren Sell on what this is and is, I'm seeing new electronic marquee signs. Can you break that down?
Well, the sign that we currently have is not electronic. It is old. The lights don't work on it anymore. The letters, the white plastic part that holds the letters is all broken, and we're having trouble getting the letters as well. But the big thing is, is it's really difficult to put the letters on it. You have to use the long pole.
Are we going digital?
It's not, we're going digital, yeah.
Congratulations. I love it. I'm excited.
I can't get any staff people to put the letters up anymore.
Can't get any of the staff people to change.
Their neck hurts.
Well, good job on this project. I appreciate this. I could tell you that I recall many times seeing somebody out there with a big pole and. So congratulations on the new endeavors.
All right, Council Chair? Yes, Councilman.
Director, I know I asked you this once before, but the money isn't specifically donated for a sign, right? It's into your general fundish or some?
Well, it's not technically general fund money, except for this year, for the first year. It was put in the budget as money for capital outlay items. In the years past, it's never been included in our capital outlay budget, but this year, Mr. Sabuda put it in that way. So it's actually a grant that comes from Wayne County in regards to our Wayne County Park Village money. We recapture some of that based on a formula that they have for us, and we're able to use that for most of the projects that we wish in the years past. The last few years, it's gonna be going towards the Van Houten Park project and other things have been throughout the years.
Now, I know this is a nice investment, and that sign is probably from the, when the city was sixty-three, something. But you know, I mean, I'm hoping you don't have any plans in the near future, within the next five years, on relocating the community center.
I don't have any plans.
Okay, good, right. Okay.
I haven't heard of any plans.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, so motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Bedun. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 11A. Mayor Bazey, first reading and second reading for the proposed ordinance H22-03 Amendment to City Code of Ordinances, Section 33-29, for tree plantings.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council moved that proposed ordinance number H-22-03, an ordinance of the City of Dearborn Heights providing that the code of ordinances, City of Dearborn Heights, be amended by amending Section 32-29 concerning permits for tree planting, care, removal, as well as Section 33-30 concerning tree protection. Be considered read for both the first and second time and be adopted on an emergency basis. This ordinance shall become effective upon publication as provided by law as outlined in 11A.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Chair, Councilman Bedun.
This is not even a discussion. I'm gonna give my kudos to the mayor on this one and to our Corporation Council. Thank you guys for this, for real. I know some people are gonna be a little upset about this, but I'm gonna tell you kind of like what me and the council chair had a discussion. I buy a new house in Dearborn Heights. I mean, this tree is huge. It's still healthy according to what the city says. I should have the discretion, if that tree's in front of my house and it's in my way, I want to go. And it's simple. Today, we have an ordinance to make a vote, and being allowing, and I know we're a city of trees, and I don't say every resident, there's 23,000 homes, I doubt 23,000 homes are gonna go out and remove the tree in front of their backyard.
They gotta pull a permit, and they gotta do it at their expense.
Right, and just remember, this is not the city right-of-way, easement, Boulevard, is, they don't have discretion to do that. That's still is treated differently, but the other portion of the property, yes, you have discretion.
Councilman's referencing, which was in my initial proposal with this ordinance, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. If a resident has a tree between, and let's talk specifically, let's not talk easements because it's gonna confuse some people. We're talking specifically between the sidewalk and the street.
Yes.
Okay, and there's a tree that's healthy, and I live in that house hypothetically, and I, for whatever reason, just don't like that tree. I want to put a different tree in there. Do I, as a resident, have a right to replace that tree, provided I get a permit, provided I pay for the removal? Provided, obviously, if it was healthy.
No, if it's healthy. There's not a provision for it to be removed by the resident if it's healthy. If it's dead, dying, or diseased and in the city right-of-way, again, the Boulevard, the easement, the area between the street and the sidewalk, then you can go, and the city will end up having to give the permit, provided you meet all the conditions in the ordinance. This will expedite the removal of dead or dying trees.
Because you do it at your expense as a resident.
That, I'm sorry, but it's at the expense of the resident, and that includes potentially.
Yeah.
But it's only in the easement.
Okay, but my intent with that ordinance at the time, and this is what I said at the meeting, so I, me, I would want to amend it personally, but I also want it included in the easement, if there's a healthy tree, that obviously the city's not gonna take out, and you, as a resident, have intent of taking it out at your expense as a resident and replacing it per the permit with a new tree, whatever the new guidelines are for, whatever trees need to be, and whatever brand trees it has to be, you should have the right to do that. That was my intent.
Yeah, the difficulty, I mean, the potential difficulty with that is that then we get into the issues with regard to the Sixth Circuit opinion that I referred to.
And Canton.
That, I mean, you could, you could potentially end up structuring it in a way, but you've got a difficulty because now you're giving them a right to end up doing something with regard to this area, and now you're making a conditional on them providing a certain expense, and that was explicitly what was problematic.
But we can't do it. We don't have the funds to do it either as a city.
Mr. Miyake, we are three years out from tree trimming and removing of trees.
Yeah, but the point is, is that if we could potentially tweak the ordinance to end up allowing for the Department of Public Works to remove these things, but I think it's, it's, you're getting too close to the problem that Canton ended up having with regard to conditioning their permit on them having to come up with some amount of money. with regard to conditioning their permit on them having to come up with some amount of money.
But it's the Department of Public Works does it, and this is one of the problematic things, is they're way behind already, two, three years, and somebody purchases a home and they don't want a big tree that, you know, for whatever reason they don't like. They want a smaller tree that does not cover the sun on their home, and they want something that looks a little nicer. They put, you do landscaping, they want a nicer tree. To me, they should have a right to do that. If we're gonna wait for the Department of Public Works based on the fact that they are way behind right now, you're looking two, three, four years, or whatever it happens to be.
The tree is still being replaced with another tree.
And getting a permit.
And it's getting a permit. It's like choosing, you know, right now we don't own the easement, right? But if my sod is bad on that easement, I'm gonna remove the grass. I'm gonna prop it up and I'm gonna put new sod. Same thing. The tree's not good. I don't like it. I'm gonna remove the tree. I'm gonna put a new tree.
And some people don't like the trees that get really big and then start taking the sidewalks up and now it's creating a safety hazard. To me, a resident should have a right to do that, if they do it at their expense, or they can wait for DPW to do it.
This would, this would have to be amended to basically permit that. It doesn't provide for what you're saying there, but then we do run into what I consider to be the problem that Canton and that the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals considered to be problematic, which is now essentially what you're doing is saying you have a right to remove this, but we're gonna condition it on you having to come up with a tree planting scheme. And we don't have any rational basis that's been figured out in an individualized basis to say how much that tree has, how much has to be done to mitigate what's ended up causing. And that was explicitly what the problem was of the US Court of Appeals.
Okay.
And that's why I didn't include that. I apologize if I ended up misunderstanding, but that was, that was part of what I was saying, that was a problem.
Take this back, I was gonna, and then we'll vote on it, but can you take it back and maybe rewrite it in a way that is following a lot of?
I'll, I'll try to do the best I can. I just think you're kind of starting to run and head on into the, into the legal problem.
In my opinion, we'll deal with that when they come to us.
Right, you could amend the motion and have it read for a first time. And, uh, and then, um, uh, for the second reading, I could end up having it come back.
All right, council chair, this one's my thing. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm a big tree advocate, you know, a tree hugger. And I, I, I can see maybe, you know, on your own property, if, you know, like a tree, I mean, I'd like you to keep it, especially the bigger ones. Uh, but, you know, maybe it's, it's, you know, it's your right to do what you want on your property. But now you're asking for a right to do something on city property, and that's, that's unacceptable.
Mr. Wenzel.
We have a tru- the tree, uh, you've been in the real estate business, you know, when you're selling a house, tree line, it's a beautiful home on a tree-lined street. You know, I mean, even if you plant a little tree, it's gonna take th- twenty years to get to a tree line where it makes a canopy. You know, it's really desirable, the canopy.
Uh, and, and I get your point, but again, there's a lot of people that don't like the trip hazard on the big trees that cause, you know, on their sidewalks. Some people don't like the fact that it takes up and takes a lot of the water away from the grass that's in the front. Hey, you got my dad. My dad is psycho about making sure the grass is absolutely perfect, okay? And when that tree takes up a lot of the water from there, obviously, you know, some residents don't like that. Again, I'm just leaving it as an option available to people. If I had to guess, I think in every two to three blocks, you'll have maybe one or two changes.
Well, I've got one. I live on the corner.
Running on this.
Council chair. I li- I live on the corner and I have, uh, two ch- big trees on, uh, city property. One of them is about three foot diameter and it's in a four foot space. And it's, I, I, I've replaced the sidewalk several times, and the tree has been trimmed for Edison. And it, it's a big tree, but just leans one side, and it looks terrible, and I'd like to cut, have that cut down. You know, but the city says I can't do it, but, you know, I'm saying, just because you don't like a big tree doesn't mean, you know, if it's y- y- it's on city property, you know, I mean, your own property, you know, go do what you want.
I mean, you're telling your opinion and I respect that, but this is my opinion on this ordinance.
Do we change it to one, to?
So, we, we're gonna go for first reading, we're gonna make that amendments and come back to a second reading. So, motion made by Councilman Muscat as a first reading with amended being a first reading, correct, councilman?
Um, correct.
Okay, and, um, seconded by Councilman Conston. Um, all in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried with the adjustments by Corporation Council. Next item on the agenda is item ten B, resolution calling for the state of Michigan and County of Wayne to allocate American Rescue Plan, uh, Act ARPA funds in support of Down River Utility Waste Water Authority, DUO.
Council chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution from the Down River Utility Waste Water Authority DUO, calling for the state of Michigan and County of Wayne to allocate the American Rescue Act ARPA funds in support of DUO as outlined in eleven B.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Conston, supported by Councilman Baydun. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eleven C.
Council chair.
Councilman, uh, Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the local governing body resolution for charitable gaming license for You Are Not Alone Foundation as outlined in eleven C.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Conston. Is there any discussion on that?
Council chair.
Councilman Baydun, go ahead.
Uh, so I could tell you that I, I'm relatable to this. Uh, there used to be a charitable, and if you can step up, if that's okay with you, council chair. Uh, there used to be a, uh, charitable, uh, poker gaming that used to happen, uh, in Garden City. At the bowling alley.
Vision lines, I believe.
Uh, maybe, maybe, and every single night, a lot of my friends, including myself, a couple of times, I, you know, my mom would be very upset if she heard this. Uh, but, you know, we would go and I was terrible in poker. I always lost my twenty bucks.
Yeah.
Never won, believe it or not. I've never won a dollar. But I know my friend Brady, Brady, who works at Crest, he used to win often. Uh, but I'm just being honest, and it would also attract a lot of heat and anger and emotions.
So, the conversation that I had with Council Chairman Abdullah, um, the organizations that wanna work with my organization aren't in Dearborn Heights.
They're not in Dearborn Heights?
They're not in Dearborn Heights, but after speaking with the Gaming Commission, my attorney that donated to services, my accountant that donated to services, and everybody involved, based off our understanding, I have to have you guys recognize the fact that my foundation, which is addressed out of Dearborn Heights, provides charitable services throughout the community, which we do.
Which is for, uh?
Mental health, so with the, the educational services we provide are mental health awareness education, financial literacy education, um, physical nutritional health education, and then once that one of the founding members achieves her full M.D. and becomes a surgeon, we're gonna add medical health education to the list as well. And then we do community outreach. We're looking at adding scholarships. If we can get this approved, we can get the funding for scholarships. We can get the funding to grow our adoptive family.
Can you give me a, a rough number of what you've donated last year and is, and where can I see that?
I, like I said, my accountant's still working. So basically, everybody that does everything for me donates their time one hundred percent, just like I do. One hundred percent of the money raised, we, we raise, we contribute a hundred percent to community outreach.
One hundred percent?
One hundred.
What do you profit out of this?
Nothing, truly. I'd.
Good man.
So, if you want the story, I mean, a group of me and my friends started this a couple of years ago, three years ago to be exact, in twenty nineteen, because we got tired of going to funerals for kids that were dying in the community, simply put. Um, we had this crazy idea to start this massive agency that was gonna focus on finding a way to link mental health to finances, to nutritional health, to physical health, basically everything that stresses us all out as adults. We realized that financially, like we've all been talking about online, it's physically impossible. I mean, you're talking millions upon millions of dollars just for a facility, let alone the payroll for financial advisors, doctors, uh, trainers for, you know, physical health and nutritional health, things of that nature. It's not possible. So we've decided to focus on education. Now, after COVID nineteen happened, we realized that there's a big need in the community for parents that are struggling, for example, to meet ends meet. So around Christmas time every year, we don't, we adopt a bunch of families. Provide them all brand-new clothing, all brand-new toys, um, we've donated computers, tablets, school supplies, you name it. And I basically tell the families, just give me a list, no budget, and if I don't have the money, I'll write a check for my own money. Not an issue.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Council chair.
I, I don't, I mean, I don't know what technically what my question was, but, um.
My books, my books for twenty twenty-one aren't ready.
How about nineteen?
They're not due until September, so I'll have them done probably in the next couple of weeks.
You're a nonprofit organization.
I am a nonprofit. I have a five oh one C three. I'm recognized by the state of Michigan and by the IRS. We were established. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, I've been involved with this type of thing, uh, where you have a poker night and it's don- um, but every time that we've organized one or, or, uh, like a youth sports organization, the, the dad's club received money from one.
Correct.
It, it never had to have a, it was just they held that and then they donated that money.
He's taking this to others. He can take this throughout, throughout the state.
Yeah, I, I know. Okay, yeah, I was saying, but, I mean, say, I mean, I'm all for what you're doing, but
Hundred percent.
Uh, it's, isn't it easy if you just go to like the, the Elks Club and say, hey, you guys are gonna have a poker night?
They did.
And then they say, okay, then we'll, we'll donate all proceeds to you.
So I did.
What's the advantage of having a license?
I did, and they put me in con- in contact with the person that runs the events and communicates to charities. And then they put me in contact with the Gaming Commission Board of Michigan. Contacted the Gaming Commission Board, uh, based off my understanding, basically, I'm providing the license, they're providing the location.
So it's making it easier for you to have these events?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
But I'm gonna work with organizations like American Legions, for example, um, and other organizations like that, that, that host these events.
They work off of your license at their facility.
At the end of the day, they need a charity to be able to have a poker room.
Okay, yeah, that's cool.
I mean, you're, you're talking potentially upwards of thirty grand I can raise if I market it the correct way.
Oh, yeah.
And that can do a lot for adoptive family, that can do a lot for scholarships for kids in need in the community. I mean, that can do a lot for educational programs. Thank you.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you very much, sir. We'll go ahead and take this one to a vote. Uh, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Conston. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is two gentlemen that have been coming for the last maybe four, five meetings. So we're ready to go ahead and vote on this, so.
And if anybody votes no on this, after you guys have been sitting here for six months, something's gonna happen.
I got him, council chair.
Motion, uh, on a temporary food truck tent slash cart business license application. Council chair. Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck slash tent slash cart business license applications for A-one Dogs and Burgers LLC as outlined in thirteen A.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydun, supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Council chair.
Yes.
I've had the privilege of working with these gentlemen for the last five or six months. They call me every single day. I appreciate and enjoy their phone calls. Sometimes you're a little hectic. Sometimes they don't show up to their meetings with Rick. Uh, I'm sure they drove Rick crazy and all the, you know, friends and family at the building department, but I could tell you, they got a great hot dog. It's, uh, they got a great burger. They got great walking tacos. Uh, they've also provided to great services to Dearborn Public Schools, where, uh, they've actually reached out to me and said they.
Is it outside?
Is it outside? I mean, I'm surprised you didn't bring it outside, but it wasn't approved, so.
We're hungry.
And it's not mobile.
We're hungry.
Next council meeting, you better be out there serving me a hot dog.
But I will tell you something, at the next city council meeting, we'll have them accommodate so that you guys are prepared to, you know, take care of us.
You can pull it in here. All right.
Council chair.
Yes, council.
Um, what's, what's the meaning of a temporary license?
We don't officially have an, an actual license.
So how long do they have the license for?
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days, okay.
Yep. Okay, so motion made by Councilman Baydun, seconded by Councilman Muscat. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Congratulations.
You guys are some, y- y- you two guys are, 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 uh, 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 inspiration to me for as relaxed and calm and cool as you guys are.
Yep.
Please let that stuff wear off on me.
So this is, eh, this is.
Please, please come touch me.
Yeah.
That's enough, right?
Councilman, Mr. Muscat, I want you to know, they also own a, uh, smoke shop
Yeah.
in Dearborn Heights, right next door to Cloak.
I don't smoke.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, they, they smoke, I mean, you know.
I don't smoke.
Um, but, but I just want you to know that they're constantly investing back into Dearborn Heights.
I just like the food.
And this was a part of my vision with the, you know, food truck thing a while back, if you remember, is I want people to be able to open up all kinds of food trucks, give people different options in the city, and it just provides good vibe for all occasions in the city. So thank you and congratulations. Next item on the agenda.
It's the first food truck, uh, outside of May.
Yep. So next item on the agenda is comments from council members. I'm just, for the sake of keeping this thing short, I'm gonna make a quick comment for the city of Dearborn Heights to continue to work, specifically the mayor's office, on getting a grant writer and a grant manager. I really think it's extremely important in our city.
Working on it.
Yeah, let's find a way to find, uh, budget money some way, somehow, because they can bring in millions and it costs them seventy, eighty, ninety thousand, and, and I, y- you can't beat that. Good investment, so just wanted to refresh your memory. I'm sure you're working on it beautifully. Thank you. That's it for me. Any other council members? Let's keep it all short, please.
We're gonna keep it very short, um, just a couple of things here. Uh, congratulations to A-one Dogs first and foremost. That's awesome, guys. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna be there to check you guys out. If you wanna go ahead and give us your hours, I know Councilman Muscat will probably won't show up because he'll be in bed, but I'll be there. Well, maybe he'll be there. Maybe I owe my hot dog, or he owes me a hot dog, but we'll be there.
Yeah, I owe David Karizik a couple of his hot dogs.
You owe me one too. You forgot, okay.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you do.
Okay, then we'll go.
Okay, you owe me a hot dog.
The mayor owes me a steak dinner, but we won't get back to that.
Well, we can go for steak too.
Yeah, okay, nice.
Second of all, to the I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I know, I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep it quick. I'm gonna keep it quick. And to the Issa Brothers, I just want them to know that uh, one of the reasons here why my no, my, my vote was coming in here to the Issa Brothers was yes. My vote, though, turned into a no, was one thing that, you know, we didn't know what the cap of the C of O was. I couldn't tell myself that I'm gonna put the city in a burden that we could not afford anything with the potential of hypothetically getting our, our, uh, our ARPA money. Um, but I would like to believe that, you know, I hope that Giri Miyaki and the administration and Mariano, who been working tirelessly on this contract, go back, speak with Mr. Shank, put a cap, you know, the very simple things that we needed. Let's make this approved. Let's get this rolling. Um, and unfortunately, if they don't wanna move forward, then go out for RFPs. Uh, but I'd really like to see the Issa Brothers, and I want the city to know, if there's somebody that knows the Issa Brothers, it's me. If anybody knows we saw him, it's me. A guy really puts his heart and soul into things, and he really has the right intentions of developing that, that golf course and that banquet center. And I swear to God, I know if he, and I've said it before, I watched the man mop his floors. This is the owner, this is a man who has probably potentially a lot of million dollars in his bank account. Uh, but he sits there and mops his bathrooms because he cares for the businesses that he invests in. And I'm gonna leave you with the final wrap-up. I am not gonna take the shine away from, uh, our, our, our Lynn, our clerk, but uh, elections are coming up. I ask that everybody goes out and votes, regardless of who your candidate is. I want you to go out and exercise your right to vote. Uh, every year, Dearborn Heights shows up with a very, very small percentage. Uh, voting is extremely important. Uh, we have close to thirty-six thousand registered voters. I could be wrong more. Wow, okay, so we're at forty-five now. Uh, forty-five thousand registered voters. We're lucky to see anything more than six or seven. Let's, let's, let's try to get twenty. And I know right now is a gubernatorial election, but on an average election, so I'd, I'd really like to see the residents at home, go out, vote, request an absentee ballot. Uh, you don't even have to be absent from the city to be voting absentee yet now. So go out and vote. I know, uh, our clerk's gonna take it out from there.
Okay. Any other council members with comments?
Council chair.
Councilman?
Uh, I'd just like to say that, uh, we had a good discussion about finalizing the contract for the golf course. I hope that we get the last, uh, ten yards done and we get a contract that, uh, protects the city and, uh, has the, uh, concessionaire still moving forward, uh, with the deal.
Council chair.
Okay. Councilman Muscat?
I just wanna say to the mayor, please get this done, the golf course, whatever we have to do, either go out for bid or first thing in the morning, call Mr. Shank's office and, uh, if not, then please go out to bid immediately, so we can put this to bed. Please, I beg you.
Okay, thank you, councilman. Any other council members?
Council chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I wanna thank everyone that came out to the meeting tonight. It was pretty impressive to see a full house, but thanks chief for sticking around. You sit there going, why, why am I staying here for? My gosh, yeah.
Don't fall asleep going home.
And, uh, you know, the, the, obviously, the elephant in the room, the golf course, um, you know, uh, there's a lot of issues that, you know, that I'm concerned, no one, like I said earlier, no one wants this golf course opened more than I do, and I think it should be a priority over the clubhouse banquet facility. But, um, hopefully we'll work something out in the event that someone is interested in it. That's not currently involved, you know, contact the mayor's office and let them know.
Thank you.[1767.08] Okay, thank you. Next up is announcements from administration. Any announcements? Ma'am Clerk, go ahead. Usually I say ladies first, but there's two ladies.
I'll do this real quick. Thank you, Councilman Bedun. Since you don't have a study session next Tuesday.
Correct.
Why don't you go out and vote?
Adios.
Okay. Polls will be open from seven AM to eight PM, but prior to next Tuesday, I wanted to let you know that the clerk's office will be open this Saturday from eight to four, just for election business.
I'll be there.
For absentee voting, okay? So, um, we'll be there at eight. And then a quick reminder, you had mentioned about the absentee voters. We have issued five thousand twenty-three absentee ballots, and we have received in return two thousand nine hundred and fifty back for fifty-eight point seventy-three percent as of five o'clock this evening. So, um, those that are still out there, please return them, because we wanna get as many in as we can before Tuesday. And a reminder for those voters in precinct twenty, it's no longer at Saint John the Baptist, it is now, um, thank you, Library Director McCaffrey. It's at, uh, John F. Kennedy Junior Library.
Thank you, Mike.
Uh, John F. Kennedy Junior Library on Van Buren. So, see you at the polls.
Council Chair, a question for.
Madam Clerk?
I have a question for the clerk. Uh, what what is the procedure if someone receives an absentee ballot, but they they decide they wanna vote in person?
Well, they would have to spoil their, if they received it.
Mm-hmm.
They would have to surrender their ballot.
To who?
To the clerk. You you can surrender it at the polls if you wanna go in person. You know, or you can go ahead and you can come to, come and spoil it at City Hall.
Okay.
Do you let them vote at the clerk's office?
What do you mean?
Yeah.
So let's just say I spoiled it there and I say, hey, I wanna vote now here at the clerk's office.
Only absentee. You you have to pull it. If you're gonna vote in person, you have to go to your precinct.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Next up is Action Jackson.
Hi. I just wanted to remind you about the concert Thursday night. We've got Pirates of the Caribbean coming. It's a really good band that we've got, uh, coming in. It's a Jimmy Buffett tribute band, and we also have a classic car show, seven to ten PM, so don't miss it.
I'll be there.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Council Chair.
Yes.
I, um, I wanna commend some of our, like, departments. I know they've been really working hard this week. Uh, actually, the last couple of weeks, you know, with the fire department, as mentioned, you know, they still, there's, uh, they had actually three incidents drowning, and, uh, you know, what, thanking for saving. I mean, they still responded to that one scene. Also, our police department, you know, been talking to our, uh, Chief Hart. They've had some few incidents in the last few days, and, uh, they handle them very professionally. And, uh, I've gotten a lot of, uh, feedback from residents, you know, they're really given positive feedback, you know, about, uh, the way that, uh, the community policing, uh, police officers are engaging residents, and, you know, some of the police officers actually give them badges to, uh, kids, you know, as they're patrolling, so.
It's tough.
It it is, it's amazing.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other announcements from anybody in the administration? We have our radio host, also our library director, Mike, go ahead.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Voices a little hoarse today. So, uh, just wanna talk, um, about a couple of things. First off, the summer learning program and jamboree is in full swing. Over a hundred and fifty tiny art kits have been distributed, which are these little tiny, um, easels with these little tiny canvases on them, which have gone out, um, like hotcakes. Um, and we have distributed a hundred or fifteen hundred activity boxes to our residents. Our Under the Sea Party drew over a hundred and thirty people and was packed, thanks to Jim, Rob, A.J., Venus, and Eileen, and all the staff that helped, uh, make it a success. Um, don't forget to turn in your art, uh, before the end of July. Um, that's all for now, and thanks for your time and see you at the library, and I'm going to put on my community hat now. Um, so uh, last Tuesday morning at, uh, one AM, uh, two people came and wrecked the Pride Garden out here, uh, by the sidewalk. Um, they didn't just wreck it, but they literally took pieces of it, put it in the back of their car, and backed away, so no one would find out who they were. Um, I don't know who they are, um, but, um, uh, I consider them honorless, I consider them cowardly, um, and, um, in the spirit of trying to find a solution, uh, we're going to redo that garden, uh, Saturday, uh, August sixth at eleven AM. So, um, going to be, um, donating personally to get the gardens back in order, um, because I feel it's just the right thing to do. Um, so, um, I know this community, my community is better than that, and, um, I hope it can be better. So thanks for your time.
Council Chair, I've got a question for you, Director.
Yeah.
These these little art kits and the other things, are they still available? Do you have any left?
We're out.
You're out?
We're out.
You get more?
Uh, we're. We've already done like two waves of trying to make, we're we're out, out. Um, but yeah, they're 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 a blast, and a lot of people liked them. Um, but yeah, unfortunately, we're out.
I've had a lot of kids on our seniors and they they, all the kids had a Black Wow on them.
I don't know, maybe we'll try to find some way to do it at another upcoming event, uh, or something like that. But yeah, it was really, really, uh, popular.
Oh, yeah. Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Yes, go ahead.
All right, I have a couple announcements also.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, you're welcome.
Tomorrow night, the twenty-seventh, at six PM, at the admin building for Westwood Community Schools at three 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 five South Beach Daily, we will be having the Ekor's Creek Commission. Mr. Ali Deep, Deep, will be our main speaker, and hopefully we'll be able to set up and show the drone results along the the Ekor's Creek.
What time is this tomorrow?
Six PM. And, uh, so we'll we'll catch up on all the things that we have been doing and where we currently stand. Then, in competition with, uh, Kim, on Thursday evening, uh, we always have our South Dearborn Heights Civic Association meeting on that day. Uh, she is sitting next to one of our speakers for the evening, Mr. McCaffrey. We will be talking about the Little Red Schoolhouse, uh, the, what's the name of our cemetery? The Nolan Cemetery, and anything in general historical to our city and surrounding area. That's at seven PM at that same location. So at both times, you can have coffee and, uh, hot water for tea and cookies. So please come and see what's going on. We'd love to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other announcements from any of the building, by the administration?
Sorry, we have two on Zoom for the, we have two on Zoom for administration.
Okay, go ahead, Madam Treasurer.
Oops, where'd she go?
Sorry, I lowered my hand. Um, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to put out a friendly reminder that summer property taxes, the deadline to pay without penalty or late fees is August the fifteenth. So that's a friendly reminder. Send mail-in, use your mailing envelope. It came with your tax bill, but please allow at least one full week for processing and getting to us through mail service. Um, you can pay in person at City Hall, of course. We're there Monday through Th- uh, Thursday, eight AM to five PM. Or you can use one of the convenient drop boxes at City Hall, but please no cash. You can also pay online, and you can visit the city website and do that online. Uh, you can also pay by phone if you want to, and that number is one eight five five three four zero four four nine zero. You already can pay at one of Dearborn Federal Savings Base, Dearborn Heights locations, including two heights, that's at, uh, Warren and Easter, or four one one South Telegraph, which is down by the, uh, Y, you know, fifty second.
Yeah.
Fire station. And lastly, you can pay at one of the kiosks, and the kiosks are great because they're available to you seven days a week, based on when the store hours are, but we have it listed on the city website for you with the information, the addresses of the kiosk. And again, there's several throughout Dearborn Heights, including Zad Market on the Bay of Hope.
Uh, you got cut off.
There's Valley Market on Joy Road.
I'm writing down the time.
Thank you.
So, that's a lot of information, and it is all on the website, on the, uh, homepage. So please, uh, make sure you visit that if you're looking for ways to pay.
Madam, Madam, Madam Treasurer? Yeah, um, you broke up a little bit there when you were referencing, uh, some some places on Telegraph, and you came back saying the fire station, uh, what?
I'm sorry, I know.
What was it you were referring to?
Yeah, but it's four one one South Telegraph. So four one one South Telegraph, it's Dearborn Federal.
Oh, the the bank on the corner, okay. The bank on the corner, okay.
Okay, so we've got you covered.
Okay, yeah.
All right, you have any questions, please feel free to call us at the Treasurer's Office, three one three seven nine one three four one zero. And the last thing I wanna do is thank the Treasurer's Office staff. Um, they always continue to amaze me, and they use the remarkable talents and skills to serve.
You got cut off, Councilwoman, I, uh, 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 excuse me. I still think of you as a Councilwoman, but Treasurer, uh, but I I, we get the gist of what you were saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, while our council chair is not here, um.
Can we make fun of him?
No, he's coming back. He's gonna have to, uh, call on the next person.
We have Director Jamal that's up next on Zoom.
Director Jamal is next. Oh, okay. Okay, sorry, restroom break, break. Uh, Director Jamal, go ahead.
Uh, very quick. Uh, I'll make a little correction, just to make sure institutional, uh, correction is, uh, heard. Uh, first, all grants are supposed to, if it's possible, to be part of the city budget, uh, unless it's too big to be, uh, just, uh, being spent, uh, table funding will not be budgeted. So, uh, the recreational grant from the county not being put in the budget as capital, that doesn't mean that was correct. Uh, so, I just wanna make sure that this is not reflecting on, like, the new control of uh, making sure the grant is part of the, uh, investment. Number two, uh, all bits, all bits, uh, who involve, uh, any infrastructure, uh, correction or improvement must by the council, must present to the council all the specifics, uh, the plans, the the schematics, what you need to do with cost.
Okay, uh, Hassan, although I I'm sorry, I have to interrupt, because this one's just announcements. So anything like that, what I'd suggest, maybe either put it in an email, in a voicemail, whatever, send it to everybody, but this particular section is just announcements.
But again, the public already be informed wrongly about issues, they need to be corrected.
Send an email.
This gentleman, you know, this is for your benefit, so the public won't have the the wrong information from you.
Okay.
As public record. Number three.
Go ahead, go ahead one more minute, because we do, we gotta wrap it up.
Very quick, the ARPA money, no matter who's the consultant, no matter who, it's not allowable for parking lots, sidewalks, recreational activities, recreational building. Please make sure that in your mind. It doesn't matter who you are either. We are in the process right now with the administration, myself part of it, to evaluate a a, you know, an ARPA consultant. We need that, we need it very badly, okay? But no matter who, parking lots, recreational sidewalks are not allowable under ARPA, unless in the future the congressional, you know, committee change that rules and sign by the, by the president. It's not gonna happen. Number four, very quick. You know, I just wanna correct the record, so everybody understands that the administration, the council, myself, the Ekor's Creek company do other thing, money.
Okay, Hassan, we gotta wrap it up. Gotta wrap it up.
But very important.
Uh, 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 excuse me. Put this in a form of an email, so we can all read. But 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 we will, but we, but we will bring it to the public. We can bring it to the public. You put it in an email to the administration. This time is allowed for announcements?
It's announcements.
And you're cutting into the people who ought to come up and speak about what's going on.
I'm I'm done, I'm done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director. Uh, any other announcements from, uh, City Hall? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the general public. You will have two minutes, please come on up, state city, street, and name. No yawning in the audience, please?
No yawning, because I'm gonna go to the street.
I know, right?
I'm messing with you.
Good evening again, Sir, at three five four Rosemary. I had to leave my dinner on the table because of what I heard about the discussion over the golf course, and the language which was used by some of the people. I remember you cut her off when she used the F-word one time, but somebody stood here, and he told all of you to kiss you-know-what, and he put his hand on his back, and none of you gavelled him, or had the courage to throw him out and tell him, you don't have business in this city.
With due respect, in that particular ti- at that particular time, uh, which was her hair, I I know what I know what he's referencing. At that particular time, the gentleman said this, in 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 the context, it was not, everybody can key K, um, A, he said.
He said, you will have to kiss my, basically, his ass.
Okay, but I'll, but I'll be honest with you.
To every resident.
I did not take it in that context at that moment.
And he comes and sit here, and, you know, bring all his buddies and his partners, and come try to accuse Tom Winsel, and I hear accusations that basically he's doing something illegal. Mayor, if you know anything about Tom Winsel, he done any bribe, anything, please say it to the public. Anyone! Shame on anyone! If you know if he received any money illegally, say it. I don't want to say more than what I know. I wanna keep it civilized as much as I can, and try to keep that thin string between me and some people. Otherwise, some people will not be happy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience?
Good evening. Rachel LePointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, I'm here to advocate for our wonderful absentee voter team. I am a part of that team. I love it. It's a great experience to be part of elections, and as our wonderful clerk mentioned, get your absentee ballots in. Let me explain a brief part of this process. When a ballot comes into the clerk, it goes through a bunch of steps where they verify the signature, they put it in the system that it was received, all that kind of stuff. So if you, maybe Councilman Bedun, have an absentee ballot that you forgot to fill out, and you go Tuesday, oh, man, it's election day, I gotta take this in, you can bring it in at any time on election day, but then what happens is it has to go to the clerk's office first, here at City Hall, from wherever you drop it off.
We have two, we have three drop boxes, one at the J F Kennedy Library, one, one at the end of the sidewalk here in the drop box right connected to our office.
Right, so if you drop it at any of those places, wherever you leave it, it has to go back here to City Hall, to the clerk's office first on election day, to be put into the system and have your signature checked and everything. Then it has to be taken to the absentee board where they're working, which is not here at City Hall.
They have to verify it there.
They have to verify it there, go through a, process takes about a half hour at least, and then it can finally be processed. So if you bring it at eight PM, what ends up happening is those of us at the absentee board probably won't even see it until ten or eleven o'clock at night. So, I beg of every absentee voter, if you can get those ballots in before Saturday, you'll make all of our lives easier and help us get home a little bit earlier. It'll help Lynn get home, maybe not at, probably two or three AM.
Or six.
Or six AM. Even these small elections take a long time. We won't even talk about the.
Lynn, please, I don't wanna wait till two AM.
And then.
You better not.
If I've got a couple extra seconds, um, the North End versus South End thing. Thank you. The North End versus South End thing, uh, it reminds me of something a little different. So when we discuss racism, we we can often discuss the idea of being colorblind, and how that's really not a good way to go about it, because we're ignoring the realities of what's happening in our world, right? There is racism, right? We all know that. If we're colorblind and we just ignore it, we're not really doing anything to solve the problem. In the same way, I see the North End versus South End thing. There are real divisions. There are real stories about people that have had these things happen. And when we just say, let's just move past it, let's ignore it, move forward, we're not allowing anybody to actually heal from the past. And if we really wanna move forward, we have to acknowledge and heal that. Otherwise, we're just putting a Band-Aid on a giant infected sore, and it's never gonna get better. and it's never gonna get better. We gotta like do the antibiotics.
And with due respect, you said, see, North Heights versus South Heights. It's North Heights and South Heights.
Well, that's why I did versus.
But that's what I'm saying, it's not versus. That's what I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get people's mentality changed from that.
I think though that people see that happening though and things like where money gets spent.
I just want to tell you something, Rachel, I want to disagree on something. One thing I gotta give credit to this administration is that the Ekor's Creek has been a priority. That if there's one thing, I...
I'm not talking about the administration.
But that's a South End issue. And then to say that this administration is neglecting the South End, it's South End versus North End, I'm gonna tell you something.
I'm not talking about the administration specifically. I'm talking about the whole way that everything goes. Would you say to Leslie or, you know, Dave that like, "Oh, I don't think that that racist thing happened to you"?
No, that's not true. Nobody's saying that.
But when you say that you don't, that you're gonna disagree that there's issues, when someone says there are issues, you're invalidating there.
There's issues across the entire city though. It's not just the North or the South though. It's across the entire city.
I think it's something...
You're dividing a lot.
Point of order, time is up.
Thank you. Come on, man. Guys, listen, I just want to say something, Council Chair. Just, it's not a debate. I know, I'm just giving you, give me one minute, Council Chair. Give me one minute. Look, guys, come on, man. One thing about everybody that read on here, and I'm gonna tell you two, Councilman Tom Munso, we gotta stop with the whole North versus South. It's not North versus South. It is a community issue. We are facing community problems. Flooding issues happen a lot longer in the South End, it's now forcing in the North End. I want you to know, and I understand that. But for us to continue to constantly say, "The North End, the South End, the South End, the North End", it's gotta stop. Really, it's gotta stop.
I agree.
You wanna have, you wanna have the rivalry in football between Annapolis and Crestwood? That's one thing. You wanna have it in basketball? That's another thing. But I want you to know something. I put a lot of focus on the North and the South. And I put my focus in Dearborn Heights. I don't want anybody or a resident to be able to take away the work that I do both in the North and the South End. I do work in Dearborn Heights, plain and simple.
Come on up, Vince.
I am, then you're not elaborating good enough.
You have three. Go ahead.
Tropkowski, Columbia Street.
Dearborn Heights.
Dearborn Heights, oh yeah, Wayne County, Michigan. Let's learn from this debacle over this golf course for how long it's been going on. If it does have to go out for a rebid, please, please, post it on everything. That first RFP that went out was a fourth grade job. I hate to say it, because like it had never been done before. There are so many other places that could have been posted, like the golf industry, the landscaping industry. People are looking for that type of work. So, and even with colleges, contact the colleges. They have courses. They're looking for places for the, teach their students, even with the culinary arts. Contact the construction companies. I'm sure they've got some money that they'll teach their carpenters, their electricians, and stuff like that. I know, it's, you know, a wild thought or whatever, but please consider it. Are you listening, Mayor? I'm saying if it does have to. But at the end of the discussion there, it was possibly if it did go out for a bid. So if it does, please consider it.
This could still be workable.
I understand that, but if Mr. Eesa decides to say, "Screw you" or "To heck with it", then you gotta go back, "I'll forbid".
Correct.
All right.
Correct.
My point.
Thank you, Vince. Anybody else in the audience? No? Okay, let's go ahead and go to Zoom. Next up is Mr. Hassan Saab. Please unmute yourself. You have three minutes. City, street, and name, please.
Hassan Saab, John Daley, Dearborn Heights. My comments are for Zohar Al Khat and Tom Winsell. First of all, the last official compliment, Tom Winsell named me by name when he came spoke as a resident. And I love that. I didn't get a chance to answer him back. I want to say a few things to Mr. Winsell.
Okay, but Hassan, let's just keep it respectful, please.
No, I'm very respectful, you know, I'm not swearing here, but I'm gonna respond back to his answer when he named me by name. When he said that I'm insulting your family, I was mistaken. You forgot to point out that I have donated endorsements for your so-called project at the house. That's number one. You got that picture. Number two, my question is to you, you have a nonprofit you run. Why did my homework on it from Guidestar and I went to the IRS and pulled a 48506A on your nonprofit? When was the last time, Tom, you have filed anything on that nonprofit?
Okay, but Mr. Saab, I don't know...
Hold on a second, this is my public comment.
Okay, I'll allow you to speak, but I don't know if he's under obligation to answer you on that.
Okay, he, okay, if he's not gonna answer, it's public information.
No, I will. No, I'll answer it. I filed.
Okay, tell us my time, Dave.
I'm sorry.
What's your question?
I did, I paused his time.
What's your question?
When was the last time you filed anything with the IRS about your nonprofit?
I file it every year.
That's absolutely false.
No, I'd file it every year. And it's, listen, listen, if you don't know, if you make... Okay, if you, if you make, if you take in under $50,000, you file a post, it's called a postcard return. Do your homework. I do it every year. Do it every year. Do your homework, please, instead of insulting me and my family. And your so-called expertise.
Okay, in the audience, please, Rachel, please, you gotta keep it down, please. Okay, and the council, if he doesn't want to answer, he doesn't have to answer.
I'll answer.
But a public comment at his discretion to talk.
But I'm gonna send some information over that I got, comes directly from the IRS. Number two is Zohar Al Khat is calling, he's referring again to me every time I talk to him. He says, "No, he's not, I swear to God he's not." I'm not his partner and I'll come in like a posse you do. And if you got something against Mr. Lisa, which you claim you know, Mr. Zohar, direct him to the states directly and say it to him, not when he leaves, you come back.
Okay.
My third question is to the mayor's office, directly to the mayor. May I have a question about the police department since the chief is not on here? Since you guys dissolved the SWAT team in the city of Dearborn Heights, why are these officers still wearing their SWAT hats while on duty?
I would have to look at that, Council Chair. It wasn't dissolved, they actually were not...
Or disbanded, whatever it was.
They resigned, so, well, actually, all but two resigned.
So the ones that resigned, why do they still have their pins on their uniforms?
I'll talk to the chief and I can have him see tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, don't go away, don't go away, because you always run out after the meeting, so I can't talk to you. Are you still there?
I'm not going, I'm not...
Okay, yeah. What is...
To do the construction and the...
Yeah. Well, I don't know, that's, but what motivation do you have against me to insult me constantly? I just, excuse me, excuse me, wait a minute. Just, no, no. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
One more time, guys.
Just, because if it's something I'm doing wrong, please tell me so I don't do it again. I mean...
No, it's, no, it's just all the public. It's not personal.
Well, did you, did you do, did you look at any other, any other council members in their finances?
I honestly did.
Okay, which ones?
I don't have to name them, but I did.
Hmm, mhm. Did you find anything wrong?
Yes.
So why'd you just mention me then?
Because the only one I could imagine, I had to do something else.
Because you could hurt me the most and my family, right?
No, if I wanted to hurt you the most, I would have never donated to you. I would have never came out and helped you. But you're the one coming at us.
You keep saying you donate. What did you donate to me? I'm curious.
Nothing at all, Tom.
I'm just curious, I mean, let me know, because I did thank you, because you mentioned it before. I gave a thank you card.
And you did, and you asked me why I haven't said something, and I told you why I didn't say nothing.
Yeah, but I'm curious of what you...
Okay, we're way off track here.
Well, if you did, thank you. Thank you so much for donating to Jamie's kids.
Next up is Mr. Sam Alhaj. Please unmute yourself. You have three minutes.
I am, I hope you can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you.
Sam Alhaj, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, went down. It's been a long meeting. It's been a lot of frustration throughout this whole meeting. But all these lies and all these BS that have been brought forward, and still the same person always wants to hide behind this finger, that's a shame. Speaking of which, I'm so... So I personally had several conversations with you and I gave you the multiple time to correct your mistakes. And at the end, you decided like, "Oh, you don't want to talk about it no more." Last time, Nasa Abdullah, I tried to bring this issue out to you guys and unfortunately you decided, "No, you want facts." You want the facts? It's too early, it's too late right now to discuss them, but I highly encourage you to schedule a study session and have them, you and your presence, because those actions gotta be taken right away. The same issue that when he kept on asking to write for a study.
You're breaking up.
Yeah, and I'm breaking up.
An hour and 43 minutes and I still ask you for a sub- session for it? It's like, come on, it's a no-brainer. How much longer do you need for a sub-session? Three, four hours? There is a conflict of interest that has been done by Councilman Tom Winsell and that has been brought to you guys' attention and it has recorded for some other residents who have discovered that Councilman Tom Winsells have accepted bribes from other people.
Okay, Sam, we can't make accusations here.
Do you want me to...
Are you comfortable with them fishing?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm still talking.
All right.
I'm still talking.
Go ahead.
And that particular resident has been advised by a judge that he should take that stuff to the proper authority and that person has failed so. The only reason that person has failed to do so because they have their own agenda with council. Now, if you'd like to answer, Tom, this will gladly answer if you have another answer back from me.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to say to the person that has this information, please bring it forward.
No, it's your script, Brian, it's bound.
Yeah, what'd I, what'd I do? I mean, they bribed me to do what?
Who obviously bribed your script is the one who approached you and told you with this.
I don't understand the script. Script, writing your script, saying that what you're saying is written for you.
Not bribing, saying somebody's writing your script.
Oh, yeah, well.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, well, you know, I'll tell you, Sam, Sam, there's...
What happened to the public?
Sam, there, there...
You willing to make up? Tom Winsell, listen to me. Are you willing to make up? I meet me tomorrow at the City Hall with the president, the council chair, and attorney and I'll show them the proof of your conflict of interest. And if they have any complaints, you are willing to resign off the council?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
What time would you like me to meet you tomorrow morning? Give me any time if you want, from 8:00 to 5:00.
Well, first of all, you know, I'll do that, but I got checked.
My question is clear. I asked for a specific time, give me a time.
Hey, relax there, you're gonna blow a blood vessel there.
Believe me, I'm home smoking my cigarette and you don't give a damn about that. I may ask you, I...
Okay, you got 15 seconds.
I don't know, let me, let me think for a second. Um, what's good for you?
Whatever time that you want, believe me, I'm willing to, I'm willing to myself. I'm willing to hold out like this tomorrow if I want to.
Okay, 8:00 a.m.
I'll see there at 7:45 at the party, I'll be waiting for you, brother.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Alhaj. Your time is up. I appreciate it. Anybody else on Zoom? I hope that's...
I don't see any hands up.
Okay.
Are you gonna be there in a moment?
We're gonna go ahead and, no, we're gonna go ahead and move to adjourn.
Need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't.
In a second.
Can somebody make that?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Muscat.
All in favor?
All in favor, in face of the eye, eye. Those opposed? The eyes have it.